Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I believe you can now begin.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. This is Rod Shagis, Parkland County Mayor, and I'll call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. I want to begin the meeting this morning by just acknowledging some of the efforts from individuals and municipalities that assisted Parkland County in the wildfire west of the hamlet of Tomahawk. And specifically, I want to recognize the counties of Clearwater and Brazos, as well as the town of Devon and Stony Plain, the Provincial Structural Protection Group, and private contractors that also assisted in battling the fire and trying to get containment on that. And with that, I want to turn it over to Ms. Swain, who can provide a few more details on the efforts out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments. And I'd like to echo your comments on support from our regional partners. And we had many other regional partners who reached out to us to offer support throughout the weekend for the fire. I'd also like to recognize Parkland County Fire Services and our EOC staff. The call went out to EOC staff on Thursday evening, and within an hour, we had our initial EOC meeting. Fire services and EOC staff remained calm and organized throughout the weekend, working for many hours on end. This includes staff at our evacuation center who work directly on the front lines to support residents. I often feel grateful for all the wonderful people I work with at Parkland County, and this event further exemplified that. On behalf of administration, I also do want to thank council for your support and trust throughout the duration of the event so far. And lastly, and most importantly, administration would like to let residents know that our thoughts are with them, especially those who had property damage or were displaced due to this fire. I'd also like to provide an update on the fire. We do have an update that will be going out this morning. So the wildfire is being held at this time, so that is a new development. The fire remains at 2,200 hectares in size and is currently at about 65% containment. A special air quality statement is in effect for the areas around the fire. Smoke from a wildfire west of, and then this is the advisory that will be going out. Smoke from a wildfire west of Tomahawk is causing poor air quality and reducing visibility in the area. Air quality is expected to improve later this morning. However, it may be poor at times again due to the fire while the fire is active. Individuals may experience symptoms such as increased coughing, throat irritation, headaches, or shortness of breath. A local state of emergency is still in effect, and this area remains the scene of an active and large wildfire. In the event that the conditions change and evacuation order may be reissued, and the evacuation process will recommence. With thunderstorms coming this afternoon, they can bring unpredictable winds. And if residents are within the fire zone and there is an active fire close to their homes, we ask that they call 911 and let them know that they are in a fire zone, and the fire crew will be sent directly to their location. Roads in this area are also still limited to local traffic only. And we just ask that residents avoid the area for their own personal safety and for the safety of fire crews. And if residents do require non-urgent assistance, we do have our ESS line that remains available 24/7, and that's at 780-203-3258. And this information will all be posted online as well. But once again, I just want to thank staff, especially fire services and EOC staff and our evacuation center staff, council for your support, and our neighboring partners. The support has been great. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. And on behalf of council, I do want to acknowledge the leadership role that you've provided as interim CEO. So that's much appreciated by council and our residents. And at this point, I will turn it over to Councillor Melnick, the councillor for Division Six in the affected area, for comments under celebrating success.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to augment what is already being said by thanking a great many of the local residents. And when I say local, that is anything that is rural out in the West End. It's not just Parkland County residents. There was Yellowhead, Brazos, Drayton Valley residents. A lot of the businesses have truly stepped up and supported the residents in amazing ways. I know sometimes almost possibly to the point that it was felt overwhelming at our evacuation centers with food and water. And we have people that have organized online support systems. I know there is one home that was lost, and GoFundMe pages are, you know, set up. We have individuals that have lost hay for their animals, and people are just outpouring of support, whether it be about providing hay, whether it be about providing transportation for animals in and out of the fire when it happened. So just really want to express the gratitude of living in rural Alberta and show the showcase of how people pull together in such a manner that while it's fearful and it's frightful, there's so much love and support around each one of those individuals, it's truly felt. So thanks to all the businesses in that Brazos, Drayton Valley area that really did step up to the plate. And the businesses in our Parkland County area, Tomahawk, those businesses there are still continually taking and assisting residents there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And last comments I have on this as well, I just want to acknowledge the emergency preparedness plan that the county has developed, and also the time that's been spent from our senior administration to ensure that there are drills throughout the years to prepare for events like this. And I think that's also contributed to the success that we've had on this. So again, thanks to all the individuals who provided support and continued effort. So we'll begin, and I do want to acknowledge and state that with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we will be conducting this meeting using electronic communication under Parkland County's Meeting Procedure Bylaw 2015-06 and Section 199 of the Municipal Government Act. And we'll begin today's with rule call. And so I'll call members of council by division and name and ask that they state whether they are present. I'll start with Division One councillor, Annisa Jensen, please.
Present.
Division Three councillor, Kabasiak.
Present.
And Division Four councillor, Hollins. And just for the record, councillor Hollins did provide notice that he would not be able to attend today. Councillor McNabb, Division Five.
Present.
Councillor, Division Six, Melnick.
Present.
Thank you. So the records will reflect that all members of council, with the exception of Division Four councillor Hollins, are present for the meeting today. And I will ask that everybody ensure that their microphones are muted unless you've been called upon to speak. So I'll just go through the procedural measures that will be undertaken today. So I will introduce each agenda item. The chief administrative officer will be asked to provide an overview. I will then ask a member of council to put forward a motion, and then it'll be opened up for discussion and debate. Once all discussion has been completed, I will ask members of council if they're in favor or against the motion, and I'll declare the motion either carried or failed. And so at this time, I would ask councillor McNabb to provide this morning's inspirational reflection, please.
Good morning, council. Mr. Mayor, during our council meeting, during our council meeting today, may we recognize our strengths and focus on deliberations and challenges we face in our services to the people of this great county. May we face the challenges and determine the best course of action to the benefit of the county. And I did have a little bit to say about the fire in Tomahawk, and then most of it was already said, but I'd like to speak about an inspirational act. And that's our rural community, emergency services, power companies, the store owners, and the neighbors. And the neighbors that came together to make up this community. I'd like to recognize how our community can all work together, and that's a rural community. And they truly need a recognition that that is an inspirational act of community service, and it needs to be recognized. And of course, that's what council is doing here, is recognizing that our rural communities come together, and they're very, very strong. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McNabb. So on today's agenda, we have the following items. Item 4.1, which is the adoption of the April 27, 2021 council meeting minutes. Item 5.1 is public input, and I will advise at this point that there are no individuals in the public that registered for public input today. At 5.2, we have a public hearing, and that is with Bylaw 2021-08, and that is road closure for the purpose of sale. And that is a portion of Railroad Avenue Southeast 1553, five west of the fifth. At 10 o'clock under 5.3, we have another public hearing, and that is Bylaw 2021-09, road closure for the purpose of lease. And that is the same legal address on that one. At 5.4, we have 10:30 appointment, and that is the Transportation Master Plan. A1 is the notice or member motions under council and mayor and council. So A1 is acceptance of potentially contaminated soils policy. A2 is service connection requirement for water and wastewater servicing policy. A3 is multi-parcels country residential subdivision approval policy. A4 is capital and operating cost sharing policy. A5 is agricultural impact assessment policy. C1 is Bylaw 2021-15 repeal of Wabman bylaws. C2 is Bylaw 2021-16 hamlet of Wabman's specific fees and charges. Item C3 is rescindment of agricultural policies. D1 is council committee work plans. D2 is High Crest Place Community League, and that's an amendment to the License of Occupation. D3 is the 2021 not-for-profit organization grant funding, and this is specific for the hamlet of Wabman. Eight one, we have our standing item, which is Rural Municipalities Alberta Contact Newsletter. Eight two is Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update. Item eight three is committee reports. I'll now ask members of council if there are any additions or deletions, and I'll start with Division One councillor Jensen.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Division Three councillor Kabasiak.
Nothing. Thank you.
Division Five councillor.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
And Division Six councillor Melnick.
I have no additions or deletions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Swain, any additions or deletions from administration today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No additions or deletions from administration today.
Thank you. Can I get a member of council put forward a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. Councillor Annisa Jensen, Division One.
Thank you. And I'd ask members of council to please raise your hand if you are in favor of this motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda for today is item 41, which is the adoption of the April 27, 2021 council meeting minutes. Item C3, which is rescindment of agricultural policies. Item D1, which is council committee work plans. Item 8.1, the Rural Municipalities Alberta Contact Newsletter. And item 8.2, which is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update. Were there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda for members of council? And if there's not, can I get a mover for that motion, please?
Mr. Chair, councillor Kabasiak, Division Three, I'll put forward the motion to accept the consent agenda 41, C3, D1, 81, and 82. However, under the minutes of the meeting of April 27, at the near the end of the agenda, there's a listing that council went in camera to discuss items with the auditor. Could it be noted, please, I had a technical problem. I was disconnected. I was not able to participate in that discussion.
We will have to amend the minutes of that. So if you can remove that item off the consent agenda, if you'd make that motion to remove that item, and then we'll deal with that item. Councillor Kabasiak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And with that, I'll move the consent agenda with C3, D1, 81, and 82.
Thank you, those in favor. That is carried. And councillor Kabasiak, do you want to put the motion forward to amend those minutes then?
Sure, Mr. Chair. I'll move that the minutes of the April 27 council meeting be adopted as amended. And that would include removing my participation in the closed session with the auditors. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd ask members of council to please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion. Thank you. Thank you. That is carried. So with that, we'll move on to today's agenda, and we'll move to item seven, which is new business, seven, a member, a mayor and council member matters. And I do, as mayor, have brought forward the number of motions for council's consideration. And as such, I will turn the chair over to councillor Kabasiak.
Chair, thank you. So we'll move to those items. Did you want to have, I guess, our move to item eight, seven, eight, one, which is potentially contaminated soils policy? And did you want to put the motion on the floor, Mr. Chair, then?
Yes, I will, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'll put the motion forward, then I'll speak to it. So the proposed motion is that council direct administration to prepare a potentially contaminated soils policy and present this policy for review at the committee, the whole meeting on July 6 of this year. And just to speak to it, I'm bringing this motion forward and seeking council support. And the purpose and intent is to take adequate steps to protect landowners, the county, and the environment, including the aquifer, which many of our residents use as a source of potable water. The county's environmental conservation plan does recognize the risks from contaminated soils, and it does state that harmful or toxic substances must be cleaned up as quickly as possible, and contaminated soils must be removed from property to protect shallow groundwater resources. So the minute the motion does direct administration to prepare a policy for council's review and possible approval, to establish procedures and to ensure soils brought into the county on both public and private lands are free from contamination and/or deleterious materials. And as of 2015, municipalities do have an obligation to account for and report on any liabilities associated with the environmental obligations, including contaminated sites. So obviously, there is a significant risk, and I believe that we can take measures to ensure that we don't incur any increased liabilities. And from my perspective, I believe this would be a wise and prudent measure to take. So with that, I will turn it back to Deputy Mayor Kabasiak.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll open this up for question or comment, and I guess, first of all, to Ms. Swain. There are a number of proposed motions that are coming forward, notice motions that were brought forward by the mayor. And the council has, would have input through the referral policy for these to be reviewed. But these are, I see these as a number of activities, whether it's contaminated sites, wastewater, or multi-post, or subdivision authority, or cost sharing. Certainly, there are policies, there are practices, there are procedures in place. So if you could just comment, I'll be looking at existing policies to review to make sure that they reflect current day expectations. And I guess, from my perspective, I would hope that these policies and these, these issues are in place administratively. I'm, I guess, I'm wondering where we go with these, with these motions.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Kabasiak. So administration did review briefly each of these policy areas, and we did have a discussion on some of these. Administration did provide a recommendation within the report within the agenda for this. So for each of the policies, administration's recommendation is that we support a review of this policy area. However, we do need to look to ensure that there is overlap with our existing policies. And we'd also like to request an amendment to the timelines to enable us to bring it back in early September. So we had stated September 7 for council review for each of them. I do also have, I'm just checking, sorry, who's on the line here. I do have Rob McGowan and Dave Cross on the line as well, and these are relevant to their areas. So if they, if they would like to speak as well, they're welcome to speak. But just, we did, we did discuss and review as an executive team.
Okay, Mr. McGowan or Mr. Cross, did you have comments? I see three councillors have raised their hand for comments and questions as well with the motion. I'll ask Mr. McGowan or Mr. Cross comments that you wanted to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Rob McGowan. No further comments than what Ms. Swain has provided. But in order to undertake this work, there's a number of items to undertake, and we're currently experiencing capacity issues. And we're currently experiencing capacity issues as we speak. So the extended timeline obviously would give us a, an opportunity to do a more thorough job and a better presentation for council. So that was our request. Thanks.
Mr. Cross?
Madam Chair, no further comments to what certainly support what Ms. Swain and Mr. McGowan have said. That, that'd be nice to have a little bit more time for us to review these things and bring back, you know, what we find out to council in the fall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That motion is on the floor and I apologize. I didn't see the sequence of hands going up, but I'll start with division one. Councillor Jensen, questions or comments on the motion?
Yeah, sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor, I was last in, but my questions have pretty much been answered. I just was struggling around the timeline, but also the background information provided. I know in the past when I brought forward notices and motion, I've provided, you know, you know, detail. So I'm glad that ECs had the opportunity to review and discuss. And I guess it's just up for debate here at council now. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Melnick.
If you wanted to go in division order, councillor McNabb would be next, fine. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I have some concerns with the policies that are being brought forward in general. So I will first speak to the contaminated soil policy. I guess for me, it would be in and around the messages that we send out, the effectiveness to policy. So are we always going to be able to get a letter or certificate from who, from where? Timelines of getting, you know, we, we have a industrial park that they need to move soils because we're, we're trying to fast track a development, appropriate development. It could be in anywhere of the county. We are putting another layer of hamstringing, another layer of bureaucracy, as some of the residents would probably say, in order to adhere to possibly what this policy is. There's just not enough information in here for council to adequately support sending direction to administration as to what is expected out of this policy. You know, what is that, you know, because if it is possibly one way, absolutely, I won't vote, vote in favor of it. If it's, you know, something different, I might. There's just not enough information. And as councillor Jensen indicated, in the past, we've had to provide written information so that council can adequately have the same amount of information to evaluate the proposal being brought forward. And I know it's about sending direction to administration to create a policy, but there should be a framework that we discuss around it. Thanks.
Councillor McNabb?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. My, my comments are very similar to councillor Jensen, councillor Melnick's about the information provided. And I recognize the notice of motion was a little different than this motion in particular to contaminated soils brought into the county where this motion is drifting about contaminated soil. So I question, you know, what we already have in place for that type of stuff. So it's about the information provided to send direction. And I, I'm not too sure, you know, I'm, I'm sure there's some verbal information that, that people could bring forward. But it's about written information, so we all have the consistent information to make a good decision here. And I just don't see it on this particular item and some of the other ones. You know, and again, I agree, maybe, maybe some of this needs a further discussion. And, and maybe some of it is good, but I just, to send a direction, I, I don't know if the clarity is there to send direction to ask those situation to do something here. So anyways, I'll listen to what, what the mover would like to present also.
Okay, thank you, Miss Councillor McNabb. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? If not, I'll ask the move of the motion. Mayor Shagis, you've heard a few comments with regard to the notice of motion in the process, enclosing comments. Would you like to offer any other perspective?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I did go through the, the policies we have in place. I did not see any items, any policies that addressed contaminated soils. The concerns about is this additional red tape. It would simply be, and this is an operational matter. So for me to put something forward, as you know, we all are aware, council is responsible for policy. So the direction is for administration to come up with criteria and the operationalization for the policy. They're the ones who develop it. Ultimately, this is about the core values in our strategic plan, which is providing responsible government focusing on and operating in a safe, efficient, reliable and cost effective manner and acting today with the interests of tomorrow in mind. And that's directly from our strategic plan. I believe that's what this is doing. It's asking administration to take a look at how do we ensure that we protect our residents. If, if it's coming from Atchison, the developer simply has to provide a letter, I would assume. And again, this is for administration to develop is this soil has come from this legal address. We'd be able to confirm if there have been any records of any type of activity that may pose questions. So subsequently, there may or may not be requirement for that developer to prove that those lands are not contaminated. My biggest concern is soils coming from outside of Parkland County that we have no idea what, if there's potential contamination. I think maybe council is aware that Swan Hills facility is going, is slated for closure soon. There's no new facility. What's going to be happening with a lot of those toxic materials? We have no idea how those are going to be disposed of. This is just about protecting the interest of Parkland County, limiting our liability and I believe being responsible to the ratepayers. Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair.
Okay, I did ask for closing comments, but I see because of your closing comment, there are two other questions. So I will allow councillor McNabb and councillor Melnick to speak.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So I guess I have two, two components. One is in the motion, should it go through or remain on the table, is Mayor Shagis willing to amend his motion to September seventh, as was requested by administration to allow for sufficient time on their behalf. Second is a procedural piece based on what councillor McNabb had indicated that the notice of motion is not as this motion is read. So from administration, is that of, of a issue? Ms. Williams, possibly from your department, you would be able to articulate whether or not the notice of motion and the actual motion must match. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, if you'd like to respond?
Thank you to the mayor and to Ms. Melnick in regards to the notice of motion and the motion itself. If the mayor wishes to accept that amendment, he can. Or we can go back to the original motion, notice of motion that was presented.
So I apologize, am I clear? So it, it is the fact that it needs to be a requested new motion as an amended motion to the notice of motion?
That would be correct.
Okay, so there would have to be an amendment. I'll just throw our councillor McNabb to speak first.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And that's my concern here with all these motions. A little bit of, I guess, muddy water is the notice of motion was speaking, on this particular item was speaking about contaminated soils brought into the county. You know, and then the scale of that, you know, I know the movers spoke about Swan Hills. I've heard Swan Hill has been closing for ten, fifteen years. But, you know, are we talking that big scale? Are we talking about a load of black dirt coming from the black dirt company? And that all adds to the details or some kind of a, an idea of the details of how, how large this motion has to be, or sorry, how, how large we're going to send administration into digging into what are we talking about? I just don't see there's enough information here. It warrants a great conversation, but I don't know if it's there yet because it's a little muddy because of the notice of motion said one thing and this motion says another thing. In my perspective, we are voting on this motion written down right here. And it's just not clear what we're trying to do. It's contaminated soils. That's a big, that's a big topic and warrants a bigger conversation, in my opinion.
Councillor Jensen? Councillor Jensen, did you have a comment?
I do. Sorry, I thought I clicked off. I agree with councillor McNabb, certainly. And, you know, my issue isn't whether or not these policies are value, of value. I, I see it, and especially with five coming forward at once. It puts me in a position where I may want to do one and not agree with another with no underlying information. And I think it, as councillor McNabb says, just warrants that bigger conversation. Because my concern is, especially with five policies coming through, with staff having to complete these, and we may not want, I understand it's council's prerogative and it's our role to direct policy, create policy and request policy. But there's a lot here for staff. And then they may come back and we go, well, we don't, this isn't what we thought because we don't know. We don't understand even what's, you know, we want here. So it's a process thing for me. It, that's, that's my only issue. It's not over the validity of the motions. And it's also a concern over the amount of work here that would be required for staff. So I'm just going to put that forward. I don't know what our, our process is. It's always been an irksome point for me in terms of notice of motion and the information that we have to provide. And there's a lot of work here for them. So that's my concern. I don't, I see the validity of what the mayor is trying to bring forward and I don't want to vote against these policies being formed. I just think we need to do some underlying work. So I don't know, I'm stuck. Yes, thanks.
Okay, with that, we do have a motion on the floor, but I'm going to have to put these on hold because, Mr. Mayor, I have to turn it back to you under five point two. At nine thirty, there was a public hearing followed by another public hearing at ten o'clock. So I'll turn these back to the mayor so we can deal with five point two and five point three.
Thank you very much councillor Kabasic. So as you had mentioned, under five point two, there is a public hearing. And so I will call that public hearing to order. And this is for proposed road closure by law number two zero two one dash zero eight. And formal records are being kept of these proceedings. And we are holding this public hearing in accordance with the provisions of section twenty two subsection four of the municipal government act as amended. And this is to provide an opportunity for the public to provide input and comment on the proposed bylaw. We'll begin the hearing with an overview and a presentation from administration as well as any written information that was received prior to the hearing. Then there would be an opportunity for council members to ask questions of administration. Subsequent to that, there'll be an opportunities for members of the public to speak. And we do have two registered Parkland County residents who indicated they want to speak to this particular bylaw. Following their presentations, there'll be an opportunity for council to ask questions of the presenters and/or administration. Following all the presentations, I'll ask members of council if they feel they have enough information to make a decision on that matter. If they'd like more information, I will have a motion to recess the hearing to a subsequent date. If council is comfortable that they have enough information, we'll close the hearing and move to the motions for consideration. So with that, I will turn it over to administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jody Hancock, Director Engineering Services, has joined us to present an overview of the nine thirty public hearing for road closure by law twenty twenty one dash zero eight and is prepared to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. I'll look for a head nod that my voice is coming through clearly. Okay, thank you. So we have two bylaws in front of council today, the first one, and they're distinct from each other. So the nine thirty one is a road closure for the purpose of sale and consolidation. The proposed motion today is that by law two zero two one dash zero eight receive first reading. Administration supports the motion. The purpose of the bylaw is to close a portion of railway avenue for the purpose, again, of sale and consolidation into the adjacent parcel. A formal request was received to close a portion of railway avenue for the purpose of sale in and consolidation into the adjacent parcel. And you can see on the image in front of you, it would be the red area consolidated into the parcel immediately. So. Administration has reviewed the proposed closure and supports the closure to address a current encroachment into the existing right of way. Closing this portion of the roadway and consolidating into the adjacent property will ensure the existing building lies fully within the private property. Alberta Environment and Parks does not object to the road closure as it will not impede public access to Wobman Lake. Alberta Transportation does not object to the proposed closure as it will not impact the ability for public use of railway avenue, which is the east west road that you can see on the image on your screen. For council's consideration, administration has attached a letter of support from area residents that was received April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one. That was a collection of residents for the area. And we have since the council meeting received two documentations. I believe both people are here to speak on the item. One came on Sunday, May ninth, and another one on Sunday, May ninth as well. Both those persons are here registered to speak. And so I hope that they'll be able to articulate the information in their letters. With that, I'll close the presentation and turn back to council. You will likely want to hear from the speakers. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Before I call on the two members who did register for the public hearing, are there any questions of administration from members of council at this point? I do, councillor McNabb, go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Chair, for the, sorry, rod for that. Mr. Mayor, for the delay there. Just have one question, looking at one of the maps there, Mr. Hancock, in regards to the lease, lease area. Was this area leased that we're proposing? And I'm sorry, it might be in the documents, but that we're proposing to sell, was that part of the lease? Asked, or is this lease area new? Just, just sorry for asking a question that may already be in there.
No, it's a very good question. And so the next ten o'clock appointment is for dealing with that lease area. So that is currently not a leased area today. And it is a, it's the second part of this presentation where we'll be talking to council about whether there's approval to close the lease area. We didn't have a mechanism to bring both together at the same time. So we have to deal with the sale, which is the, the jog that you see on the screen in front of you where you can see the building approaching into the small little triangle. That is the first deal or the first bylaw that deals with closure for sale. And the second bylaw at ten o'clock is closure for lease.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock, and I apologize for the not, the information that was already there.
No problem. Councillor Melnick?
Thank you. So I know we'll hear from the next resident, just a common question on both areas. Is there access to the waterfront available in that general area for all residents?
Access to the waterfront, you can go to the aerial image, that might be the easier one to see. The current access today is at the, I guess that would be the northwest point of the triangle. There's about a six meter width of walkway that is public access. The shape inside the yellow lines is private property. So you can see where railway avenue is, that is road right of way. And you can see the entire frontage of Lake Wobman. Or, or a good portion of Lake Wobman is public access. So that path through the tip of the triangle is about six meters. And for the purpose of sale and what you'll hear in the purpose of lease, that space stays the same.
Just wanted to ensure that for the public that that was articulated out clearly. Thanks.
Certainly. Any other questions from members of council? I do not see any. With that, if we can please allow Ms. Marlene St Pierre in. And once she is online, she can proceed with her comments and presentation for the public hearing.
Marlene St Pierre, you may now start. Please unmute your phone.
And I'm not sure, you may have pressed star six to unmute.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was not in any case. Yeah, so I, I, I wrote a letter and I just want to express at the outset for this particular sale of property, it's really not of significant concern to me. What's of more concern is there's been a clear cutting of trees along Railway Avenue that would be parallel to, to this proposal. And, you know, I've been a resident since eighty six and you know, part of, part of the charm of our little corner of the world there is that it is privatized by the trees that, you know, the groves that run along Railway Avenue and as well along the, the easement, the access to the lake. And in fact, what was spoken about earlier, there, there's definitely access to the lake that doesn't preclude passing of this. What I'm concerned about is I just don't believe that the, the trees should be partisan or part of a private owners. I think that's public land and it's still going to be public land. And I just really don't understand why that is not specified that changing the landscape is still at the discretion of the county. And, and I mean, you would think that perhaps that's not important. Except that there's been a clear cutting of trees already along Railway Avenue. There's another grove that goes down the easement, which would of course be addressed in the next twenty one or twenty twenty one oh nine. But that is my major concern and as well the, the drainage. There's been some adjustments to the area both before the current owner was there and since. And I, I'm just not sure that all of that is in the best interest of the public or just in the enjoyment of the area. And as I'm a resident that is directly adjacent to that property, it certainly has an impact as my, my front door looks right over to that property. So I, I want to be assured that the trees are, are going to be dealt with, like replanted and not further cut unless there's an, you know, diseased situation. But as I said in my letter, I would have thought that the standard would be to replant.
Ms. St. Pierre, is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah, basically I covered more detail in my letter. Do you want me to refer to all of it or?
No, that is fine. That is fine. Thank you. So I will ask administration if they are aware of this, if they want to comment on it and specifically more so the assertion that there's been change to the drainage course. I'm, I'm curious whether administration is aware of, of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
To mayor and council, I'll address the tree cutting at first. So my understanding was, and sorry, I don't have the exact timeline on it, but it was at least a year or two ago. The trees were removed that are along Railway Avenue. A number of them were flagged as hazardous trees due to their health and were to be cut down. I believe there was an arrangement made with the landowner or a group of landowners to cut the trees down and, and retain the wood as firewood. I, I believe that the road maintenance crews that were responsible for the tree removal did authorize removal of the entire tree stand. As you know, they're the ones that were flagged, you know, it was a number of years away from the life cycle of the trees before the rest of them would come down as well. So upon request of the landowner, the trees were approved to be cut down by, by our county forces. As far as the drainage question and comment, I understand our drainage team has been on site and has walked through this particular area for us. I know we have other drainage concerns throughout Fallis. This area has been confirmed as not being a, an issue or a concern for our overland drainage team. And that's, sorry, I don't have more on that, but that's about as much as I have for council today.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Ms. St. Pierre, can I ask you just to mute your phone as well, please?
To mute it or unmute it?
No, it's unmuted. Can you mute it, please? Just so we don't get feedback or, or, and making it challenging for members of council or anyone to hear. I'll now look to members of council if there's any questions they have, either from Ms. St. Pierre or administration. Council McNabb, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my question is in regards to the trees that were just identified and the drainage issue. My understanding, the way I'm looking at the drawing here is that's all located within the road allowance. It's not specific to the, the sliver of property we're speaking of, but the road allowance, is that, is that my understanding, Mr. Hancock?
Through the mayor to Council McNabb, that is my understanding as well.
Okay. So, so I, I guess the question is to the presenter there is St., Ms. St. Pierre, in regards to the, it, it, the, the issue is more or less in regards to these standing trees and, and some potential drainage issues, but the, the sliver of land is, may, maybe if you could help me out, it's got no of these trees on there or the drainage issue is what we're speaking of. But it is, are, are you aware that that silver land we're speaking of? Did it have trees on it? Did it, was it, was it part of your issue at all? Concern?
So Ms. St. Pierre, if you can press star six again.
Hi, um, no, that particular slipper of land did not have trees on it, but my, I guess my point being is that where the trees were cut and, you know, I understand that there were trees that were marked because of, of health. I, I, it was like a clear cut. I don't understand why we're not replanting, you know, maybe a, a more logical choice of tree. And I just want some assurance that you know, like for example, that that may be addressed. It's still county land. And so I guess my concern is, you know, the original twenty five Railway Avenue is a very, very small pie. And you can see that the county land, both lakefront, the west side and Railway Avenue far feed the, the area that the actual land is currently. So in, in utilizing the land, quite honestly, it's always been utilized. We've been there for thirty six years and everyone that's owned it since, and this is now the third owner since, since I've lived there, have always, you know, just not in a negative way, but squatted that land. And I don't mean that badly. I just mean it's a natural part of their yard, even though it's county land. I'm more concerned that if that clear cut can be done, and it was actually, to my understanding, done by the owner at his offer as opposed to the county tree cutters. I just wanted, I, I want some assurance that we're going to readdress that. And, and the drainage issue, I'd like to see a report on that, actually verify that because there's been a significant amount of change there. A culvert's been removed. Rocks have been removed that supported that. Anyway, I, I just have some concerns overall as I'm right next door.
Thank you for that.
So, yeah, I just want to be clear. I'm not opposed to the sale per se. I'm concerned that in extending that land that gives more jurisdiction and without jurisdiction, that, that could already happen. So what will happen further? That's all.
Thank you very much for that. So my question is for Mr. Hancock. Is there any future plans for upgrading that railway avenue and widening that road and doing a bunch of work in there for improvement? You know, I imagine that, you know, as we work forward to the floodplain type perspectives and drainage type perspectives and the overall county drainage. Is that area triggered or flagged to, for improvement and possibly I, I don't want to call it a major upgrade, but an improvement area for the drainage type perspectives and roadway improvements?
So through the mayor to Council McNabb, the county does not have any flag or the engineering services department, I'll clarify, does not have any identified near-term improvements flagged for Railway Avenue for roadway or drainage purposes. As our due diligence portion of the road closure process, we did have the foreman for the drainage crew visit the site and walk through with specific questions of managing drainage and ensuring that we weren't creating a, a drainage concern or that there wasn't a concern lying out here. And, and we did have a verbal confirmation that, that it was fine and that there was not areas to be concerned with. To Ms. St. Pierre's comment, there isn't a report to share other than our drainage foreman has been on site and has verified that, that there were no immediate drainage concerns identified.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just look to council to see if there's any additional questions for this presenter or administration from the presentation. And I am not seeing any. So I'll, I will ask Ms. Jennifer Moffett. If you can please press star six to unmute your phone and the floor is yours for the presentation during this hearing. Thank you.
Good morning, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Moffett. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, firstly, I just want to thank all members of council and their teams for your service. You know, I know it's a difficult role you have in managing all the lands and the concerns that encompass Parkland County. So thank you. Carrying on, with regards to the bylaw of twenty twenty one oh eight, you know, in regards to this one, I, I feel like it's a reasonable request that the resident has put forward. I mean, I, I don't really have an issue with this part of it. My, of course, main concern is with the second bylaw that will be discussed. I mean, clearly we have, the resident and I have different views on the value of trees and natural shrubs. I would, I would say that not all those trees were diseased and needed to come down. But as you stated earlier, somewhere on the road to that path. I wouldn't have clear cutted such an expanse, but you know, it's just my personal preference. So with regards to the sale of this, I can see how reasonable it is and if the Parkland County feels that it wouldn't, it wouldn't harm or, you know, severely impact other residents. I trust in their decision to sell that portion. So that's really all I, all I can comment on, on this particular bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett, for those comments. I will just check with members of council if there's any comments they have or questions of you.
Thank you.
Councilor Melnick.
Sorry, it wasn't from Ms. Moffett. I wanted to just thank her for her comments. It was more for administration and for the, while I understand the policy and I just wanted clarification verbally through the public hearing that the sale of any potential lands within Parkland County always goes to the fair market value. And just having that confirmed in the public hearing. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll just get administration to confirm that. Thanks.
Sorry, to Council Melnick through the mayor, I, I won't speak on all lands of Parkland County because that's what I heard you say. I will, I am knowledgeable of Road Right Of Way. So when we sell Road Right Of Way, we do sell at market value.
Thank you.
I just don't know the rest of the Parkland County lands. I, I, make sure.
That's what I meant anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. I'll just look to members of council to see if there's any questions during the public hearing that they have. And I am not seeing any, so I will ask members of council if they feel they have enough information to make a decision on this matter. If any members of council do want any additional information, please make that request at this time. And I am not seeing or hearing from members of council, so we will close the hearing. And there is a motion for council's consideration. And if I can get a member of council to put that motion on the floor, please.
Mr. Mayor, it's Council John McNabb, Division Five. I'll make the motion that bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero eight receive first reading.
Thank you, Council McNabb. So we have the motion put forward by Council McNabb, comments from members of council, but first reading.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if Mr. Hancock could just go through the procedure, just so the members of public understand that it still has to go to the province and various other people to review it.
Through the mayor to Council McNabb, so our process here with first reading being approved by council would then be to take this and provide it to the Minister of Transportation who has the decision to support council's direction to pursue the closure or to return it back to us. I will say that we do a check in with Alberta Environment and Alberta Transportation before bringing it to council to, you know, almost do an administration level to administration level check. They've all supported it to this date. So council has approved first reading or is in the process of considering first reading. I should be clear on that. And with that being supported and finalized, it would go to the minister. The minister reviews it. That can take anywhere from six to eight weeks. So it is a long time period. There'll be a gap in time. With approval from the Minister of Transportation, it comes back to Parkland County. And we will draft a report with that approval for mayor and council to consider second and third reading prior to the bylaw fully being in effect. I trust that's sufficient.
Thank you very much for that.
I'll look to other members of council to see if there's any questions that they have or administration or comments on this matter. And I am not seeing any, so I will ask members of council to raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion, please. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. So now that that has received first reading, as Mr. Hancock had said, the Department of Alberta Transportation will be notified. And probably within a couple of months, maybe a little bit beyond, we should get confirmation and support from the province and it'll come back to, to council for second and third reading. So we are at nine fifty nine. We do have a scheduled public hearing under agenda number five point three, which starts at ten o'clock. And that will be for bylaw two zero dash two one dash zero nine. And that is for a road closure for the purpose of a lease and that's portion of Railway Avenue southeast fifteen dash five three dash five west of the fifth. So with that, I will call the public hearing to order. Again, formal records are going to be kept of these proceedings. And the purpose of this public hearing is to provide members of the public an opportunity to comment on bylaw two zero two one dash zero nine, and that is in accordance with provisions of the municipal government act, section twenty two subsection four as amended. With this public hearing, council will be provided an overview and a summary of the proposed bylaw from administration as well as informing council of any written submissions that were received prior to the public hearing. Once that presentation from administration has been made, council members will have an opportunity to ask Once that presentation from administration has been made, council members will have an opportunity to ask. Members of administration questions on that. Following that, there'll be an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions and we did have. The same presenters, Ms St Pierre and Ms Moffett, who registered to try to. Comment during this public hearing. Once again, there will be an opportunity to ask questions of the presenters and or administration on that. Once those presentations are complete, I will ask members of council if they feel they have enough information. To make a decision on that matter. If they do, we'll close the hearing. If any member of council wants. Administration to provide more information, we'll recess the the hearing to a subsequent date. And so with that, I will turn it over to administration. I do just want to check. I just want to check to make sure there was a notification I received that a member of council was having. Problems. I see everybody is back online, so over to administration on this one, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So we also have Jody here to present the ten thirty AM road closure bylaw two thousand and twenty one dash zero nine and answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Wing. To mayor and council, this is the second part of the two pieces of this activity on the same parcel. The motion here is that bylaw two zero two one dash zero nine receive first reading. And I guess the purpose of this one is to close a portion of railway avenue for the purpose of leasing. A formal request was received to close a portion of railway avenue for the purpose of leasing. And we are following through on that request. Administration has reviewed the proposed road closure and supports the closure for the purpose of lease. This request is associated with the previous bylaw that we just heard. I'll clarify that for the record, bylaw two zero two one dash zero eight. The proposed lease provides a current law order of plan one five eight one, MC block one lot fourteen. Greater opportunity to use the space northeast of their property while limiting encroachments into the road right of way. There's a shed shown within the right of way in the in the aerial image and that shed has been removed. You can see the white square on the picture. So that has since been removed as they don't have leased access to the land. The road closure has been identified as a lease versus sale. To ensure that a future turnaround could be constructed at the west limit of railway avenue if ever desired. And to ensure that we had full capacity to build out railway avenue as we needed. The closure or the closure for purpose of lease area also ensures that the existing space for public access to the lake is retained. You can see the gap at the northwest corner of the site. The width is retained through the area. There's currently a six meter separation between the west point of the triangular lot and the adjacent property. This area will remain a minimum of six meter width between properties. Alberta Environment and Parks does not object to the proposed closure as it will not impede public access to Wobman Lake. Alberta Transportation does not object as it will not impact the ability for the public to use railway avenue. The lease footprint will not impact the existing area drainage. As we had discussed in the prior previous road closure, we have had the same inspection and same review done regarding overland drainage. I will also ensure that it's clear as a lease agreement, the county will have full rights to cancel the lease at any time. I believe the proper timeline is thirty days notice, and if there are issues with access to the lake. Or issues with needing to widen railway avenue, we do have the opportunity to cancel the lease. Checking my notes, there is an annual lease fee of fifty dollars for the parcel. I believe it's meets the minimum size. And so therefore, it's just a token fifty dollar lease fee. And that will be as per the two thousand and twenty one fees and charges schedule and would change if that schedule ever changed. With that, I will turn it back to council and mayor or mayor and council for any further questions or for the public speakers.
Thank you once again, Mr Hancock, for the overview, opening up for questions to administration or Mr Hancock, Counselor McNabb, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Hancock, I know in the future, we were planning on doing some closures or some restrictions on these. Unofficial access points. Does this have any effect on that future? Concept of restricting the the access to Lake Wobnum and and. You know, some of our future plans that we may have, I know over the years, we've been talking about as soon as the. The south side boat launch is up and running, there there's possibility of looking at restricting some unofficial access points. Is this official access point or unofficial? I'm not too clear what the. What the designation of this point, particular point is, and does this have any effect on that?
And I see Mr Cross has raised his hand and may be in a better position to answer that question. Mr Cross, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, to you and through to Counselor McNabb. Yes, we did do some work on the undeveloped access points as part of our boat launch study we completed a number of years ago. In the fallist area, the one that we're looking to down the road manage and control is. Over off of the beach road. It's not in this area. It's the the points that we've identified are the ones that are very actively used by. Residents visiting the area and launching their boats, and this is not one of those points that. We've identified as a need to address at this point in time anyway, so hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much for that. And the only other question I had for Mr Hancock, if I may, is regards to the property to the north, I'm assuming north, yeah. Is that a private property? That's no road allowance. I just just little clarity that everybody has access. You know, you had mentioned possibly a future turnaround, but. It doesn't look like this is going to impede any access and it's possibility to have a turnaround there. Is that a dead end road or does it go north also?
Through the through the mayor to Counselor McNabb, it is not a dead end road. It does connect to a number of properties. Likely should have had a bigger aerial image. There are additional properties. I will say though that there is a publicly. Or a registered easement on that parcel, so that they do have legal access, just not through right road right of way. They have easements registered. To provide those access points and those go back, you know, possibly over a hundred years, those easements in place and they were part of the rail alignment, so. There's a number of odd arrangements for access to many of those parcels as you go north of that point.
Very much.
Counselor Kvasik.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Cross partially answered my question in regard to the access. He talked about boat study area and access for for water craft and whatnot. This access, I'm assuming that this access is just a foot access. And that there's no maintenance or improvements that are required on this parcel. I'm part of my question comes from the fact that they were talking about clear cutting in trees and I wondered if that had affected that area and if it. Caused any future requirements for upgrading the maintenance of the access.
To Counselor Kvasik through the mayor, we did not identify any maintenance activities required. As I mentioned, we'd done a review with the drainage and the drainage was okay. From the drainage foreman's perspective, we did not have planned maintenance activities in this area. I believe it is. Foot access or, you know, maybe some very light, small boat. You know, thinking canoe kayak type activity, potentially a small. ATV would would back a small boat in, but it would not handle the boats as what Mr Cross was speaking to a few minutes ago. I will add as a point of clarification, just so that, you know, I maybe missed this point, but. Alberta Environment was very clear with us that they would not support. The road closure if there was any reduction of access to the lake in the width and the ability to use it as it's used today. So I'll make that that clear that that was Alberta Environment's position.
Thank you.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you very much. Just wanting to ask for clarification verbally through the public hearing. Concerns that we heard in the first public hearing was in and around drainage is in and around clear cutting. What activities are the right of the leaseholder on leased lands of Parkland County? So can they alter any any drainage areas, add bring fill in, can they clear cut any trees that are there? What is the permission level that they would require when they have the sole lease of a land? Thanks.
I'm going to be careful how I answer this. So through through the mayor to Counselor Melnick. When we get approval for a closure for the purpose of lease, we then draft a lease agreement. And we have conditions within the lease agreement. Sometimes it's maintain a setback, sometimes it's make an improvement. I'm not sure what conditions we have exactly in this agreement because I'm not sure that we've fully written and drafted the agreement. Hearing what we're hearing today, it would be prudent to write in comments of maintain existing drainage patterns as they are at the time of closure. And maintain vegetation in or around the same footprint or the same location as it is today. Vegetation, we can't necessarily say that a tree won't be removed, but maybe the tree can be removed and replaced with something that would be something similar to that. So again. With with live vegetation that will change over time as expected, but. Again, maybe we need to be careful in crafting our lease agreement in in keeping that land area in as close to existing condition as possible. Including grading for drainage and whatnot.
And if I may have a follow up, I think that that is one thing that we've experienced as a challenge at council is is sometimes not having what that. Drafted lease agreement could look like. So and I get and I understand that it's not because you're still waiting for comment to see what. Council may send direction with while you're developing that lease agreement, but it is kind of a bit of a challenge to approve. Lease without understanding what that lease agreement may may hold. So. I guess for myself, I would like assurance from staff that the comments that are being heard here and supported by council. In in and around the, you know, not adjusting the drainage area, which is a standard thing for us. And also too that possibly unless it is for the purpose of maintaining. The health of a tree or a health of whatever, that we just don't allow the clear cutting, which. We have heard today that does impact the visual and the sense of community for some people in the area. Thanks.
If I may, through the mayor to Counselor Melnick, what I'm hearing and I'll reiterate what I'm hearing is our lease agreement. Again, this is still. Land that's under our control that we are leasing. So we do have property rights. We do have conditions that we can put in place. So. What I'm hearing is that we will look at a lease agreement that ensures that the drainage pattern or that the grading of the land does not change. And that the vegetation that is currently there as it sits today does not change as well. We can put conditions in the lease agreement that those can only happen with approval of Parkland County. And so even if it is a tree that is, you know, needing to come down, there's at least a measure of control that there has to be a permission requested. We can make that a condition of the lease. One thing that we do require in the lease is that there's no structures built on the land, so that if we do cancel the lease, we're not having to deal with. You know, some kind of structure movement or tear down. They are permitted to put a fence up in most leases. So again, they can put something to, you know, enclose the space that they do have leased. Again, that's a small cost to remove. If the time comes to do that.
Counselor McNabb. Thank you, Mr Chair. I didn't want to speak over any other member of council. I know I had my opportunity already. But I just have one question for Mr Hancock. I was looking through the documents and trying to figure out. About the lease and what's the difference? You know, the the request for the lease is for what reason? And and then what's the difference? There looks like they're utilizing some space and some. Some public land already. Over and above the lease to the to the north there and, you know. Keeping it groomed and keeping it tight, keeping the trees, you know, you know, in some people's perspective, a really good job. So if they didn't have the lease, they'll just continue using the land. So I asked that question, what what is the reason behind the lease? And and I didn't see that within the the document presented by the presenter and maybe maybe you have a little bit more information. Because really, what does it give them? They're already utilizing the land.
Through the mayor to Counselor McNabb. The area that is proposed for sale is there because there's an existing structure that has been built, so that's where we agreed to sale. The original request was for a much larger area. And this is what we negotiated back down to and came to terms with with these lines that you see on the on the paper. Where with with many of these lake communities, it's we always are walking a very fine line of. Using the MR spaces or using the road right of way spaces. If we. Follow around the different lakes that we have, we've we see multiple. Type uses of, you know, open space or, you know, where the yard encroaches a little bit into the right of ways. Or to the private, to the MR parcels. And we do try to walk a very fine line between enforcing the absolute property line and allowing use of space. In this instance, a inquiry came through that started. A question about where the shed was and where a fire pit was and and, you know, in in. In our enforcement activities, we do need to get them to move all of their materials off of land that's not theirs. So that's that's a little bit of where this one started, where there was a. A concern from area residents that said someone was encroaching outside their property lines. The landowner wants to use the northwest area of their lot and where it comes to a fine point, they're they're not able to use much of that space. In their understand or my understanding. And so they wanted to increase their space into what would be their legally permitted footprint. So again, it's a landowner that has historically been using the lands. That a an inquiry was raised to look into it. Some infractions were identified and they're trying to come back into compliance with where. A fire pit or a shed could or couldn't be.
Thank you, Mr Hancock. So in those conversations, did you have any other conversations with, I see on the. On the drawing here that there's other buildings. That may be on the environmental reserve or reserve lands and on the public right of way. You know, from the neighbor's perspective, I don't know if they're they're real structures or unreal structures, meaning like are they boats or just debris on the ground? I don't know. But did you have the conversation about all the other in that? In that, on the properties that are off, are we are we just looking at that one shed? That's moved now.
So through the mayor to Counselor McNabb, the inquiry was initiated based on the tree removal and some questions asked about where the property line is or is not. What's permitted versus what's not permitted. We did try to take a very narrow look at what's out there. I think if we went and started trying to uncover every infraction. We could start a career, you know, just sitting on the lakes, finding where these are. My understanding of historical discussions with council is that we were not necessarily. Ruling with an iron fist, if I can say that, on on how these lake front areas fall within their exact property lines or not.
Yeah, that's my question. Thank you very much.
Any additional questions for administration? At this point. I have a couple of questions, Mr Hancock. What's the duration of the lease? And the second question I have it, and Counselor Melnick asked one of the questions about the conditions of the lease. But tied to that, if there is a contradiction of the conditions of lease, what is the actions that Parkland County typically takes? Or is it a warning? Is there termination? What exactly is the the process on that? Thank you.
To the mayor, I believe that leases are set. To the mayor, I believe that leases are set up for three year timeframes. They used to be annually, but the it moved to three years to reduce the administrative. Burden as well as to make it easier on the landlords. We do have a thirty day cancellation clause. So again, even if it is a three year lease, it's there's still the thirty day cancellation. That answers your first question. As far as infractions, we don't. The leases I recall reviewing in detail, I don't believe we have penalty clauses or fines within the agreements. I believe that we would look at the level of impact on the lease and and determine where we go from there as to how egregious the the infraction is. I think that's something for us to think about as we draft this lease.
Thank you, Councilor Melnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I just wanted clarification. As I read the policy of the lease, our lease policy. It does say that it can go up to five years, but Mr. Hancock, are you indicating that our practice is typically three years at a time?
That's my understanding, yes, and I can be certain to include that in the report to council if we do come back with a second and third reading, if that's the wish of council.
Yeah, just just wanted to make a clarification out to residents. Our policy does indicate that it can be up to five years. Thank you.
So I don't see any additional questions for administration at this time. So I will now ask. Once again, Ms. St Pierre, if you can provide your comments on this. Public hearing either, please, thank you.
Okay, sorry, thank you. At the outset, I just want to say that there was some very good points. Brought up by council and in fact, those are some of my my concerns. So. Honestly, the first and foremost, which I I don't understand why the actual conditions and. Whatever for the lease are not part of the. Pre-approval, like how can you approve something that has not even been written yet? And you're not approving it. I know it's quote unquote first reading, but first reading goes to. The provincial government. And then back again is what I understand. So why is that not a prerequisite for even submitting this? Should I carry on or wait for that answer?
In maybe I'll respond and look for administration if they want to augment each each condition, each lease is separate. There might be specific considerations that warrant different conditions in the agreement. So I I think that is one of the reasons for that, but I'll certainly look to Mr. Hancock for additional comment. Thank you from administration.
To mayor and council. I I we've we've been asked this question at past road closures and, you know, I've thought long and hard about how we would accomplish that. It would be very challenging for us to draft the lease. And know what the concerns are prior to coming to council for the first reading. So what what we do have is a standard lease that has basic conditions that will handle just about every road closure that we do look at under normal circumstances. And where perhaps when we have one like this that does have some abnormal circumstances or some special considerations rather. That that we need to, you know, have this public hearing timeframe to listen to what the community does and doesn't bring forward. And and try to adapt or or adjust that lease agreement to ensure that we're. We're complying with the the wants of council first and and, you know, hopefully those are are respecting and relating to what they're hearing at the public hearing from the members of the public.
You can continue on, Ms. St Pierre, please.
Sure. So I I appreciate what's being said there. I just like, why is the proposed lease not part of understanding? You know, the notice that this was intended or potentially going to be leased, like how how would I be really clear? Like maybe. Maybe some of my concerns are all for not because maybe these conditions and, you know, I'm not really clear. Look, there's a tree line there that you can see in the picture. And just the way the area that is highlighted for lease, I'm not quite clear even how far away it is from the tree line or if it even actually goes directly to the tree line. Like I it's it's not evident to me because the pictures are not really specific. So it's. Like if all these things are a normal part of a consideration in a lease, just even even in any standard lease. Wouldn't it be prudent to provide those terms and conditions so that maybe I'm excited over nothing? And maybe with some assurance that the tree line will will not be. Interfered with. And the drainage issues, et cetera, like. As I said in my first comments with regard to the twenty twenty one oh eight, it's not principally something that I. Have a big issue with because as I said, historically, every owner that I've known and to my understanding. The original owners have always encompassed that area because it it looks like their yard. So it's not that I have to do with that. It has having. Seen this clear cut on the one side makes me very nervous on the other side and. You know, it's not the kind of thing that you want to do and then ask for forgiveness. I don't believe. I think that it's something that. Is important to be established at the outset. derivative that I'll just add that while you say that your engineer or whatever department came out. And looked at the drainage, I I have to disagree. I'm not clear about the drainage that runs. Along railway avenue, but along the easement, there has been significant drainage problems. And in fact. I came to understand only after tripping on it that there had been. A digging of like a foot deep to let the ditch drain out to the lake because it wasn't draining out. So. There is an issue with drainage and I'm not sure how the culvert. Was important at one time and it isn't anymore. I I just don't know because I'm not skilled enough to understand that, but I do know that. The ditch that runs along the easement was retaining water and. And of course, that's a problem for all sorts of reasons. Even even for hatching mosquitoes. I mean, there's stagnant water is not a good thing. So I I'm just. Curious as to how that was assessed as not being an issue when in fact it has been an issue. That and the tree line and how far away the tree line is from the. The proposed lease, like the edge of it, like is there six feet between the lease and the tree line or is it right up to the tree line or? And I guess the other thing is that I wasn't aware that there had been a request for removing the shed or the fireplace. I was totally unaware of that. So that's already been established or this lease will provide that. Allowance for. At extended.
So Ms. St Pierre, is that the end of your presentation? If it is, then I would want to administration to provide some responses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St Pierre. Mr. Hancock, do you wish to respond to any of those comments and questions?
Through the mayor to Ms. St Pierre, I will certainly try to respond to a few. And and I'm likely going to miss one or two, so please feel free to ask me or ask the question again. So. Relating to the shed that is there, my understanding is or the information I have is that it has been removed. Or relocated on the property. So it was on skids. It wasn't permanently built into the ground, so it was picked up and moved. Onto the property itself. Relating to how the drainage occurs, the only information I have is that the drainage foreman was on site. He is our. Eyes in the field and and he would be out assessing culvert locations and drainage ditches and drainage patterns. And so it may not. It it's likely a scenario where he's gone out and and assessed it and did not see. Any localized flooding or any risk to buildings, but there may still be standing water in a ditch which is. Common in a lot of places that 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 can occur. As far as the agreement and how we issue an agreement where the conditions are not set. What we are looking for is an agreement. We are listening very intently to this discussion. And when we come forward with an agreement, it could be very challenging. We could hear from one person. And that might might not be the position of the vast majority. And so if we were to draft agreements based on. A single position versus the majority position, we could set ourselves off on the wrong path as well. So I think that's part of the discussion that we've had is to. Where where we do try to come back and and find compromise in many areas where all landowners can get a happy resolution. So I I think I probably missed one or two things. Please feel free to restate those.
So Ms. St Pierre, if there if Mr. Hancock failed to answer any of your questions. Please feel free to propose those again. And if not, Councilor Melnick, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
I I'm so sorry. I didn't realize that you couldn't hear me. So I just I just want to address what was just said by the gentleman that just spoke. And I absolutely agree that things should not be determined. You know, public land should not be determined by the whims of one individual. I just happen to be the one individual that is right next door. So it affects me in a different way than someone four doors down. And going back to that for the same reasons that it shouldn't be something determined just based on one person's. Request, I would I would offer that that goes the other way too. It's one person's request to actually. Request the lease and the sale. So I don't know how that's any different and because it does directly impact me. Not in in effect that this happens. So much as I'm clear to what extent, how far away from that tree line that lease is and. Some assurances that the tree line will be maintained or if necessary to cut unhealthy trees. Replant it, you know, that kind of a thing is what I'm more concerned about as as far as the the current owners of twenty five railway. As I said before, that, you know, historically, it's been sort of a squatted territory. And again, I don't mean that in any negative connotation. I just mean that it's. Naturally appears to be part of the yard, even though it's not. So when you say that the there would be a fence allowed. Like how far is that fence from the tree line, for example, is something that's important to me and. I I just really, really more than anything want assurances of that and actual a little more information about this drainage because. As I said, I've been there for thirty six years and the drainage has only been an issue for the last couple of years. So. I have to think that. That is subsequent to the culvert being removed, to the rocks that were sort of set up as the retaining wall and also to. As a safety issue for vehicles driving in that area. So I just don't understand how those things seemingly significant to me. Don't have any impact because they don't have an impact. Why were they there in the first place? Thank you, sorry.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. St Pierre. Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted clarification from administration. So when we go to second and third reading, if potentially we get to that point. Will the lease agreement be drafted and available for council to do at that time? Again, understanding that they need all readings in order for it to be a sale. So just. Sale at least. So would that would that agreement be presented at second and third reading? And just to comment on Ms. St Pierre's questions in and around the fence, there are. Rules within our bylaws as to fence placement and they would be adhered to whether it be leased land or private land, correct?
Through the mayor to councillor Melnick. The answer is yes to many of the questions that you had, but I'll elaborate better than that. Yes, we could create a potential, we could create a draft agreement for what that lease agreement looks like and share that under. Or as new information for council's consideration. Advised to that at second and third reading, there is no opportunity for public input. But that doesn't stop us from doing public input outside of the formal public hearing. So. We could take that draft law draft lease agreement and share that with the neighbors that are in the immediate influence of this decision. We could commit to doing a further drainage assessment. And and just having a second and a third opinion perhaps on the drainage situation that is. Out there and is in place to make sure that that we know what we're talking about when we're communicating to council that we're not concerned with it. We can commit to that. We can commit to putting survey stakes out where the edge of property would be. So that will give a very clear line. Of where a fence would be, where the leased area is and where the edge of road right of way would be. Again, that that would provide a very clear indication to area residents to show what the level of impact is and all of that can be done. Prior to second and third reading being or or at the time that we we could do the work prior to second reading. We have lots of time to do that work. And then when we bring it back to council for second and third reading, we ought to be able to draft in our report. And provide a proposed lease agreement for council's consideration. If we come back with something that's unacceptable at that point in time, council would have the ability to. Deny the approval or object to the approval based on either insufficient information or based on unsatisfactory information.
Councilor McDab. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know. Mr. Hancock, in regards to the perspectives of drainage and or other. Impacts, I see it as two. Two topics here. Generally, the the drainage. Question, I guess. Is is on the entire area. The the piece of property we're speaking about and the impact it would have on the drainage. So we're going to look at drainage and or impacts of drainage. Is it specific to the piece of property that's under question in regards to the lease or is it? Specific to the roadway, bigger picture, I guess. That that that's. I I guess that's the question or we're speaking about. A relatively small piece of property. That may or may not have an impact on drainage, but the question in regards to without hearing. Is more of a bigger picture of drainage and and impact. Of the the roadway, the trees that are outside. The area we're speaking of is. So if we were going to look at it, what are we looking at? Just the impact of the the piece of property that's under question or are we looking at a bigger picture? the impact of the the piece of property that's under question, or are we looking at a bigger picture?
To Counselor McNabb through the mayor. That's a great question. We I have heard about a retaining wall, a ditch with a rock bottom that was adjusted or or has changed, and a culvert that has room removed. Our specific review of drainage will be what the effect this closure and lease will or will not have on the changes of drainage. We will not be doing an area wide drainage plan to resolve all the drainage issues in the area. But again, that that may trigger an additional discussion that that is outside of the road closure or not affected or impacted by the road closure. So I'm not sure yet without having that investigation done as to whether that drainage work that's been flagged and as a concern is or is not part of this road closure. The the specific ask that we had of the Drainage Foreman was here is a road closure. Here is the area of the proposed road closure. Is there a drainage impact with that? And what you can see on the square on the screen here is, is there an impact with that red shape or not? So there might be another drainage issue in the area, but it's not increased or affected by the red shape. And I will confirm that very clearly for second reading, if that's the interest of council.
Thank you very much.
Any additional comments or questions at this time from members of council? Not seeing any. Ms. Moffett, if you'd like to provide your comments during this public hearing, the floor is yours, please.
Hi, thank you. I trust that I can be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, you know, I I have thought long and hard and contemplated about this whole request for lease. And so at the risk of sounding preachy or going over things I've said, I just I I want to speak to you as members of council, and I really, I want you to hear me. Because my opinion with the councils, council stewardship of land, it's, you know, one of the most important roles that you have. And I really feel it's the duty of council to safeguard natural areas for the benefit of all, not just one. And this bylaw to lease county land clearly benefits just one. And I would urge council to contemplate one simple question, which thank you to the member council, I don't know your name, but you came up with a very simple question, which is why? If the resident wants, the resident already, and historically, everybody prior has always used, utilized all of the land in question. And it's never been an issue. And if the resident wants to put up a gate, let him. Now, I want to speak also to the comment with regards to this, all why all this came about, and the resident wanted to lease the land was because there had been some enforcement issues, or he had been contacted with regards to a gate. And I'm going to say, he was putting up a large iron gate. And I called and informed the county and said, I don't care about the gate. But I just want to know, like, don't you need a permit to put that up since it is on county land? So my concern wasn't that he put the gate up. I could care less that he put the gate up on the driveway. But don't we all, shouldn't we, this could have been avoided by him simply contacting the county and requesting a permit or obtaining a permit if that was needed, or just getting approval? By the sounds and historically by the actions of the county, you've been very, very generous in saying, yeah, it it doesn't make a difference to us. Fine, use it. You know, if if he, if the resident wants to put up a gate, let him put up a gate. He already uses the land anyways without it being leased. If he wants to keep his fire put there, let him. I don't know who would have complained about that. But it's been there for decades. The shed as well. I don't know who would have been complained about that. That area has been utilized for decades. Every previous owner has enjoyed this privilege, and there's no reason not to let this continue. I just don't like the idea of leasing it to him and releasing control and the stewardship of this strip of land. I really feel that council must remain the guardian and have final decisions. And I know ideally in your comments, you've said that you will have this. But I can tell you over the years, and my family has been going out to follow since the nineteen forties. You know, and just recently, in the last five years, Parkland officials themselves has explained to me, and I quote, once something is done, there's not much we can do. So and I want to go over the fact that, you know, county planted shrubs and trees on county property. And I'm not talking about the trees that we just discussed on Railway Ave. The field stones in the ditch, all removed without county approval or knowledge. And with everything, and I can see how in how large your department is and and how much you have to deal with, that that's a little concern. But, you know, as Marlene said, like, it does impact those of us that are around it. And I just don't understand why we're going all through. I really want to question, why does, why does this resident need to lease this? He already uses it. Why can't he just agree with the county? I want to put a shed here. Do you mind? I don't think the county would mind. I'd like to put up a gate here. Do you mind? No, it doesn't impact anybody. We don't mind. But to release control of this is, to me, a serious and prospectively or possibly damaging situation. And I just don't know why we're even talking about it when it really hasn't been an issue. Again, I don't care about the sale. I can see how he wants to improve that triangle and and not have to apply for easements and such. But this little strip, although it might seem insubstantial, it's been a important slice of residence that has been going down and using it for decades. And it's been utilized by generations. And, you know, this land just, it's just not for the benefit of the current people and citizens that live there. But it's for future people, too, and you have to keep that in mind. And I just, the proposed bylaw lays the stewardship of this in the hands of one individual. And I just am so uncomfortable with that idea. I feel like this proposal is unnecessary. Again, he has full use of this portion of land. I mean, we all have to ask and apply to county for permission to put up gates and fences and structures, don't we? So if he has to do that, it's not like the county is saying you can't put it up. Maybe just let us know about it. I'm sure there won't be any disagreement that he can put it up because as we've said, dated historically for decades and decades and decades, this has been the case. So I guess my question, too, would be as far as the putting up a fence goes, I know that this is the intention of the owner to put up a fence. And so you also have to think when putting up a fence and installing fence posts, it's a lot of digging. There's trees there that are going to have to be removed. There's just no way around it. And will have to be trimmed and cleared so as not to impede the potential gate and or fence. And if he wants to put up a fence, I don't, I don't see why, but it it needs to be on the inside of the property. And I'd also like to state, even if the county did want to sell a portion of the area, say, where his driveway is or his fire pit. I mean, to me, that's not even a big deal, but I don't, I don't want, I don't want the county to give up that any more of that portion that is there. It's important to people around there. And I just don't believe that it would not be significantly changed. And once it's done, it's just too late. So I would really, really urge council to think carefully on this and just consider what I've said. I would prefer that you remain the stewards of this piece of land. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. I'll look to council and see if there's any comments or questions regarding the presentation that we just heard from Ms. Moffett.
Thank you.
And I'm not seeing any, are there any final questions for administration from members of council? Counselor McNabb.
And I'm very sorry, Mr. Chair. But I do have a question for Mr. Hancock in regards to our Paul, our bylaw twenty twenty one zero nine in regards to the details within that bylaw. And one of the comments, it says in the very first sentence is, whereas the road here in after described is no longer required for public travel. Is that the case for this particular item?
Through the mayor and Council McNabb, no longer required for public travel can mean a lot of things, pedestrian and vehicle. Often the minds goes immediately to vehicles. But what we're saying is that there's remainder what our our interpretation, not necessarily what we're saying, the interpretation would be that you have existing railway avenue that provides all of the space required to accommodate the travel that's occurring along the corridor, whether it's by car or by vehicle. And keep in mind as well that this is a lease agreement, not a sale agreement. So if we were to change the corridor, improve the roadway, add a turnaround, do different things with the area, we would have the ability to have that land back into the inventory of Parkland County to create what we needed to create.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from members of council? Questions for administration? Counselor Milnick.
Thank you. I think the only comment I would make was to answer or clarify possibly some of the questions that or statements that Ms. Moffett had indicated in and around the why. We understand at the county level that often there is I am things happening on on public land that A, we're not aware of, and until it is brought to the attention, and typically that is through a resident advising us of of such activity, then the matters change. It's not my understanding that we would ever allow a permit to be put on public lands to put up a fence or to put up a gate. So I know you had made a comment that, you know, what difference would it make? Just put it up. It would be okay. And administration can clarify if I'm out to lunch on that one. But that is my understanding is, once it is identified to the county, then we do need to either take some steps to determine the next course. And but but putting up structures such as fences and gates on on pub on public land would not be a just pay, go do it issue. But administration can comment on that if they feel that I'm off.
Through the mayor to Counselor Milnick, I think the easiest way to describe what we're trying to do is to ensure that there's legal and conforming use of the right of way as it is today. So historically, I would, one could argue that it has not been legal and has not been conforming to the land use. And we're just trying to do a corrective action. It was brought to our attention, so then we are required to respond.
I just feel like that it's, then that isn't the solution to lease it.
Appreciate your comments, Ms. Moffett. And and, you know, just for for both yourself and Ms. St Pierre, Parkland County is roughly two hundred and forty thousand hectares. It's a a large municipality, and there are a number of public lands. And as has been alluded to, we, it it would be very difficult, if not impossible, for our community peace officers to patrol and investigate all infractions on public lands. So it is complaints driven. And as Mr. Hancock had mentioned, it's about compliance when we do are made aware of any infractions. So final opportunity for council to ask questions. And not seeing any, I will ask members of council if they feel they have enough information to make a decision on this matter and move ahead with closing the hearing. If there are additional, any additional information required or requested from members of council, please indicate that now, please.
If I may, I just want to clarify that I would like the conditions of the that are being considered at second reading before that time, as was indicated by Mr. Hancock.
For the record, through the we will ensure that we have that, and we will listen to this recorded hearing to make sure that we recapture it again. So we will do our very best to capture all of those comments for second reading if it goes that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. So is council comfortable with the hearing closed? I'm not seeing anyone opposed to that. So you will close the public hearing. We do have a motion for council's consideration. And if I can get a mover for that, please.
Sure. Tracy Milnick, Counselor for Division Six. I'll put forward the motion, the bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero nine received first reading. And as stated within the hearing pieces, that we have the conditions be drafted and be provided as one of the information items when we are going to potentially go to second reading, to the goal there.
Thank you. So the motion is on the floor. Open it up for discussion and debate. Not seeing any comments, last members of council, to please raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion. Any opposed? So we have one opposed that is carried at first reading. Thank you. With that, we'll take a short recess before proceeding with item five point four. So we'll recess for five minutes. As you will come back at eleven oh five. Thank you. I, it appears as though Counselor Jensen may have lost her connectivity. We'll give her a moment to get back. No, I will call the meeting back to order. I see Counselor Jensen is maybe having some technical issues. But we'll proceed. The next item is the Transportation Master Plan Presentation under item 5.4. Councilor McNabb, do you have a comment?
I do. Proceed your comment in regards to quorum. Can we proceed without counsel against him? Just asking that question.
We do have quorum. We've got four members of council, so.
Oh, sorry.
Not a problem. So Ms. Swain, I'll turn it over to you, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amanda Sotard, project engineer, along with support from Jody Hancock, Director, Engineering Services, have joined us to present the Transportation Master Plan Report and answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, you're good to go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So good morning and welcome, and thank you for the opportunity to present the final transportation master plan. This is Engineering Services' third and final presentation for this project. As identified within the request for decision, there is one motion for council consideration today. And we hope we can have a look at this motion after the presentation. I will be presenting, and then both myself, Jody Hancock, and the consultant Ryan Becker will be available for questions following the presentation. I am sharing my screen. I just want to make sure that everyone can see the presentation. Ahead, so I will, I will begin. So the presentation purpose is for council to adopt the Transportation Master Plan as a non-statutory planning document that reflects the priorities and opportunities in Parkland County. Phase one, where do we want to go? And now we are at the end of phase two. How do we get there? So this slide outlines the sections of the TMP report. Section two to four reflects phase one, or the where are we now component. Section five to seven reflects reflects phase two and phase three. Where do we want to go? Section two, community engagement, highlights the public and stewarding process and a summary of community input. Section three, shaping influences, identifies the driving factors in travel demands and choices within Parkland County. Section four, existing and future condition, outlines the current and future trends that impact travel demands to, from, and within Parkland County. Section five, Transportation Master Plan Strategy, outlines the recommended transportation strategy that reflects community input and the vision called TMP. Section six, Integrated Road Network, highlights the design elements, the both of classification standards. Section seven, various implementation strategies, highlights the priorities for planning and investing in transportation that support future growth and development in our counties. So two rounds of engagement having completed so far, which are being completed for TMP and to move forward with the recommendations. Round one engagement was an online interact that the public provide input, followed by a committee of the whole presentation. For round two engagement, we posted the we heard report on our internal, on our external website. We also circulated an internal stakeholder workbook to council and county administration for their feedback. Our primary engagement consist of posting the TMP on the county website and obviously this presentation to council and DC. They're looking for transportation master plan adoption, and it will work towards implementing the short term recommendations. There are four TMP objectives. Objective one is to guide transportation investments to receive attractive and efficient options for moving people and continue growth and expansion of the existing goods movement quarters countywide as population grows. Objective two is focus on improving mobility between and within communities, expand the range of accessible transportation choices, and support continued growth and sustainable development. Growth plans and technical analysis.
Ms. Sotard, I am going to interrupt. Your audio is breaking up more and more as you proceed with the presentation. So I'm going to ask, I'm not sure if you can make any improvements to your mic, perhaps being closer to the microphone on your laptop or desktop. We can try that. And failing that, I would ask if another member of the team could finish the conversation or the presentation if the audio does not improve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in a bad area cell phone reception as well as internet. Did that make any improvement?
That is much better. That is much better. Thank you.
Okay, I will try and continue on. Please interrupt me if it's, if it's no, if it happens again. So objective four is to develop the TMP based on meaningful and strategic communication and engagement with the public, council, and county administration. So the TMP objectives, the guiding pillars that were established in phase two are establish an integrated transportation network, support county and regional integration, and coordinate and encourage alternative transportation. With these three guiding pillars, seven themes were developed. For each theme, there are set of strategic direction and actions. The seven themes are regional and county integration, network maintenance and rehabilitation, transportation safety, goods movement, active transportation, transit, and recreation and tourism. So the TMP builds on several foundational directives that influence current and future county and regional initiatives. These are things such as county statutory and non-statutory plans, which include the Technical Growth Study, the Municipal Development Plan, Area Structure Plans, the Land Use Bylaw, the Parks, Rec, and Culture Master Plan, and the Inter-Municipal Development Plans. While the TMP generally aligns and reflects the information and recommendations in the county's statutory and non-statutory plans, there are a few instances where there is some misalignment. The TMP will guide and inform new and updated strategic documents. The TMP is non-statutory, so existing statutory documents will continue to take precedence. The TMP was also influenced by regional policies and plans such as the EMR Beat Growth Plan, the Tri-Municipal Regional Transit Plan, the City of Spruce Grove and the Town of Stony Plains Transportation Master Plans, and Alberta Transportation. So we looked at the existing and future condition growth pattern. Figure 12 shows Parkland County's preferred development concept. This figure was taken from the Technical Growth Study that was adopted in 2017 before Wobbliman became part of the county. Therefore, the statistics do not consider Wobbliman growth. However, the study predicts that by 2044, there will be an approximately 50% population increase, mostly in the Big Lake area, and approximately 40% employment increase, mostly in Atchison. So as part of the TMP, we analyze traffic volumes. The traffic volumes are projected to grow between 1 and 2.5% annually over the next 25 years. The higher traffic is projected towards the eastern side of Parkland County or east of Highway 43. What we found is that capacity improvements are not required to support forecasted growth, but should consider measures to manage traffic and maximize the use of existing infrastructure. This is an excellent finding, as it shows the county's existing roadway system is well-served by a network of provincial highways, arterials, collectors, and local roadways. So we now get into the Transportation Master Plan Strategy. Three overarching strategies with robust direction and action were developed based on the guiding pillars and stakeholder input. We have the Integrated Transportation Network Strategy, which consists of regional and county integration and rehab and maintenance. We have the Transportation Infrastructure and Safety Strategy, which consists of transportation safety and goods movement. And then we have the Alternative Transportation Strategy, which consists of active transportation, regional transit integration, and recreation and tourism. So now I am going to outline the strategic direction that corresponds to each TMP theme. We have regional and county integration. The county will ensure transportation priorities align with regional trends. The county will ensure transportation priorities align with regional transportation objectives, reflecting a shared commitment to facilitating future growth and connectivity of the region. For network maintenance and rehabilitation, the county will establish and implement an ongoing program to facilitate maintenance and rehabilitation of all transportation infrastructure within the municipality. For transportation safety, the county will provide safe transportation infrastructure by ensuring that the safety of both vehicular and non-vehicular transportation modes is considered in the design and treatments of the roadways throughout the municipality. For goods movement, the county will support the efficient and safe movement of people, goods, and services within and throughout the municipality in order to facilitate regional economic well-being. For active transportation, where practical and feasible, the county will support opportunities for active transportation modes that promote vehicle and non-vehicle connectivity that consider the type and scale of the various communities within the municipality and support county economic, social, and environmental initiatives. For regional transit integration, where practical and feasible, the county will support implementation of a universally accessible, safe, and reliable transit system that provides access to the county's major employment areas. And lastly, we have recreation and tourism. The county will endorse and enhance regional recreation and tourism asset development by introducing an integrated transportation network that supports and connects these assets in an equitable, accessible, safe, efficient, and inclusive manner for all residents and visitors to the county. For the sake of time, the strategic actions for each strategic direction have not been presented. All actions are documented in Section 5 of the report. Also, as an attachment to the RFD, we have documented all short-term mandatory and non-mandatory actions the TMP has recommended. So now we will move on to our road classification. Our existing road classification consists of highways, arterials, major collectors, minor collectors, and local roads. This roadway classification has been modified to provide a clear and consistent approach that will guide future transportation planning and design. We have our main road classifications, which consist of highways, arterials, collectors, and locals. The distinction between major and minor collectors has been dropped from the modified road classification. Another difference in the modified classification system is optional supplemental road classification, which includes the four overlay routes: goods movement, agriculture, active transportation, and Explore Parkland. The goods movement overlay is intended to support heavy, large vehicles and is designed to carry goods to the market and promote economic development. The agriculture overlay is intended for the movement of agriculture equipment and goods. The active transportation overlay is intended to provide alternative modes of travel. And the Explore Parkland overlay includes a network of scenic drives and could connect diverse recreation and tourism areas. So we are now going into the maps, and we are starting with the arterials. There are over 12 proposed arterial routes. It is important to note that arterials are defined by function rather than just solely traffic volumes. Arterials provide connections to the provincial network, to collectors, and to major nodes in Parkland County and the surrounding regions. There are several new arterial connections near the Fifth Meridian and Atchison. It is important to note that the alignments presented are conceptual in nature. The most usable alignment should be selected based on existing constraints at the time of design. There are over 30 to 40 collector routes. Collectors connect county residential subdivisions to the arterial network with a moderate degree of traffic mobility and property access. And finally, we have our local roads. The majority of the range roads and township roads make up the local road network. This consists of rural, commercial, industrial, hamlet, and county residential. There are also several new conceptual local road connections to recognize the freeway intersection removal agreement with Alberta Transportation as shown. So that is the end of the formal presentation. I am available for questions, as well as Jody Hancock and the consultant Ryan Betker. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sotart, for that presentation. Mr. Hancock, do you have any additional comments? I see you've got your hand raised.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor, and to council. I'd just like to acknowledge and recognize the effort that the engineering team put into this document. It's been, I believe, at least 18 or 19 months that they've been working on it to bring it together, and we've been looking at some existing TMPs that the county had worked on in the past that were brought forward and didn't quite make it all the way to the hurdle of seeking council endorsement of it. Bits and pieces were kind of put together over the past several years. And so through Amanda's leadership and through the time and effort that she's put into the project, we get the end result of where we're at today. And Amanda has not had a lot of experience presenting to council, but I think she did an excellent job today, and I just want to acknowledge that maybe some nerves there, but great job, Amanda, and happy to take any questions to the team, and I'll try to get Amanda to answer them first, and certainly Mayor and Council. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. So if I can get a member of council to put the motion forward, then I'll open up for comments.
Mr. Mayor, it's Counsel Elisa Jensen, Division 1, and I'll make the motion that the Transportation Master Plan, April 2021, report be accepted for information as presented.
Thank you, and the floor is open to members of council. Counsel Kabasik.
Counsel Kabasik.
There we go, there we go. For some reason, I got muted. Appreciate the efforts to this final report. This has been a long time in the making, and we look at the elements of social, environment, and economic development in tourism, and I'm just going to put a question, considering all of the information and the focus and the input that was gathered, I'm putting a question with regard to where we see development in the Chakku Lake area. We've got a number of different influencers in that area putting heavy stress on old road conditions, and wild water transfer station has gone in there. A number of years ago, Township 534 was increased to an 80K standard, because in the long run, Alberta Transportation will be looking at closing off access points off of the Yellowhead Highway, so that will be one option for us in the future. We look at the development that's coming in around the Carmelite area. We look at Chakku is a year-round facility and heavy influence of the people that continue to come. They've found that jewel, and they will keep coming to that area. We spent over $1 million on a Parks and Recreation Master Plan and upgraded Chakku, and there's a neat pine center area there. So given those things with the areas that I previously mentioned, I just wondered, Mr. Hancock, if you could just talk to me about, in the master plan, we see accommodating the need for development in that area.
And then through the mayor to Counsel Melnick. I'll take. Kabasik, I apologize. As it relates to Chakku Lake area, I'll first flag that it's in the overlay area as an active transportation area, so we would be looking for ways and means to connect that focal point in the county. If I refer to the active overlay map, which is in the full TMP document, it does provide that as a focal point and as a connection point. So specific improvements, this document won't go to that level where it's about 100,000 feet up in the air. This will lean to development of a document that, if you look in the short-term actions, identifies, the first one is N4 on Table 1 of the attachment, and that is the county shall update its current prioritization evaluation matrix. So updating that matrix is what's being driven from the TMP, and the TMP will create this new matrix that we can then highlight how this does or doesn't fit into the rest of the roads within the county. I'm kind of circling around that question. I don't know if I'm as specific as you would like to be, but the TMP won't create a list of plans or a list of projects. The list of projects comes out of the prioritization matrix, and the prioritization matrix is driven by the TMP.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Certainly, I appreciate that it is a, you know, a non-statutory document. It is the master plan, it is a focus, from where we can start building some legs, so to speak, with the development, and I put it on the map. It's an issue that we built all this, this is activity and this focal point, but the infrastructure is not there to carry that. So, you know, I'm just speaking on behalf of area residents who are directly impacted. You know, we've got old coyote, old systems in there, and we talk about this as a focal point, so putting it on the map again as a need and a priority that can stem out of our plan. Thank you.
Counsel McNabb.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering if we were going to speak a little bit to the short-term action items. Is that coming up, or can we speak to it now?
Through the chair to Counsel McNabb, we had included it as an attachment, but to refer to Amanda to highlight some of the items that are in there and maybe go through one or two per page that stand out or that are significant for council to be aware of, and hopefully I'm not putting you too much on the spot.
No, I would like to speak to a couple items on that page, but maybe an overview from Amanda would be a good start.
Ms. Sotart, if you'd like to speak to attachment number 3.
Thank you. Through the mayor to Counsel McNabb, yes, I would like to highlight a couple of the short-term mandatory action items. So again, as Mr. Hancock described, N4 on Table 1, that the county shall update its current prioritization and evaluation matrix for capital roadway investments. This is an important action item for us. The other major short-term mandatory action is P4, which is that major traffic incidents, including facilities on major road injuries on county roadway networks, shall require an in-service road safety audit completed by a professional engineer. And outcomes from the audit shall be implemented as soon as reasonably possible and shall take priority over any other planned activities. So this is something that we are doing based on request only, but we feel like that we should be doing that for all major incidents. And the other one that I would like to draw attention to on the mandatory action items is on the second page of Table 1, which is P6. The county will develop traffic impact assessment guidelines and a checklist to assist with county initiatives and land development application requirements. This is an important activity for the county, so that developers really know what they have to be putting into their traffic impact assessments, and we want to try and, you know, guide the process so that all of our TIA's are looking the same and have the same sections. And then I don't want to get too far into Table 2, which is the non-mandatory short-term action items, but one that I do think that I would like to draw your attention to is N10, which is on Page 4 of the attachment. So N10 says, "The county should assess the practice of upgrading gravel surfaces to pavement based on safety, land use service level, and full lifecycle cost. The results of this assessment should be used to develop an overall gravel-to-pavement policy and update the current surfacing local improvement bylaw, which considers the upgrading of gravel-to-pavement in county residential subdivisions." So this is a very, very important assessment that needs to be done by the county. It comes up in development applications, and it is in our land use bylaw and municipal development plan. Currently, it states that we have a pavement-to-pavement policy, but we're finding that that might need to be revisited. The reason why it is a non-mandatory action item at this time is because it is going to be very resource-heavy, and right now, we are focusing on completing our existing activities that are already planned, and this assessment would be a rather large and challenging item to tackle. So that's really the only action item that I want to bring forward from the non-mandatory table. If there's any others that council would like to highlight?
Thank you, Ms. Sotart. Go ahead, Counsel McNabb.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess I just want to briefly speak to RT6, the last page. I'm just curious, it appears to be a project, not necessarily under road networks, and I was just wondering why it's there, and if you could respeak to it a little bit. And as I look at the bullets A, B, and C, you know, you recognize that that's the entire county, and, you know, whether it should be on this type of a document, or it should be in a project of document of through economic development, tourism, or whatever, I'm just not too sure if it's the appropriate place to have a project within our Transportation Master Plan. Just looking for any comments on that.
Thank you. Through the mayor to Counsel McNabb, we recognize that, you know, this could be viewed as a project. There are other action items, such as, you know, building an active transportation network that also could be viewed as a project. Again, this is a non-mandatory action item, and it's sort of a nice-to-have, and it's put into the Transportation Master Plan, because we really wanted to include, you know, the alternative modes of transportation in the document, and it is something that we heard during the Round 1 verticy engagement with the public, that we need to identify trails for off-road transportation, and that is so that, you know, they can be identified and the impacts to things such as, you know, existing development and sensitive environmental features and agriculture operations can be avoided. So, you know, if we look at other municipalities, they do have areas that are designated for off-highway vehicles, such as quads and motorcycles, so I think it is important to leave as a potential action item in the future. You have to remember that the Transportation Master Plan is a 20-year document, so, you know, we're looking further down the line on this action item, and it's something that could be, you know, looked at in conjunction with the Parks and Rec and Culture Master Plan update, whenever that happens.
Thank you very much for that explanation. So I'll ask you another question, then, if I may, and I see there's other hands up. Are we speaking about the use of our transportation roadways in regards to these off-road vehicles, whether they're... Whether they're, you know, simply in the perspective of A T Vs to snowmobiles to anything that might be classed as off-road? And how they maneuver throughout the county, not necessarily the creation of trails, but how they operate within our own network of road infrastructure? Is that the idea there or is it about the creation of active designated? Off-highway trail systems?
Through the mayor to Counselor McNabb. I think it's more the latter of what you're speaking to. So it's, and again, I see Mr. Cross has his hand up as well, and so he'll elaborate on the Parks Rec Culture Master Plan. If I take a half a step back, R T six includes a consideration that was brought forward when we were canvassing the public and our own internal administration and council. You know, we captured all of these ideas versus dismissed and deleted. So some of these are quite further down the line as where we would prioritize and rank a number of these activities. So it is something that we flagged that said, you know, somebody identified this and talked about it. And we want to make sure that we have a place to capture that and say that's a thought that somebody had. We would certainly look to align that with, you know, engineering and parks or engineering and whomever to build that up. As it relates to a project and approval for the project, any of these items that are identified as projects that would require significant resources. Would be brought forward to council through the budget process, even if it didn't require funding. We would still bring it forward as a notification of change in service or realignment of resources to do that. So council would have the ability to understand how that change will occur. And then we would look for council to approve or not approve that. When we go to priority based budgeting, that will really stand out if we're changing service for council to understand whether they want us to pursue that or want us to pursue something else. You know, I'll pause there because I don't want to speak too far on Parks Culture Master Plan. But again, we're dealing with squad, quads and skidoos and side by sides and whatever else. Driving in the ditches, driving on the roads and where do they go and what's permitted versus not permitted. So I'll stop before I go too far.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps I could add on a few comments here to what Jody's been talking about. So the Parks Rec and Culture Master Plan Implementation Plan was adopted by council a year and a bit ago. One of the items identified in there is to focus on development of a trail strategy. And it was identified in implementation plan to undertake that work in 2021. But given everything that's been going on, we pushed that out. But certainly as part of that trails master plan, what we heard when we developed the master plan that trails are important, both motorized and non-motorized. And so we get to that piece of work potentially next year. We'll look to dive into that a little bit more in terms of the off-highway vehicles and what we, you know, what might make sense for us to support in that area. So hope that helps. Thank you.
Counselor McNabb, any additional questions or comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my questions have been answered.
Thank you. Looking to other members of council, see if they have any questions or comments on the presentation. Not seen any. I do have a couple of comments and a couple of questions as well. So in the presentation, it talks about that the transportation master plan is guided and influenced by statutory and non-statutory documents. One thing that's noticeably absent for me is any agricultural reports. And the most recent being the tri-county agricultural business study, which did. Have engagement with a number of stakeholders and one of the things that those individuals, which included. Input from existing food processors was that the county should be proactive and investing in. Infrastructure, including road infrastructure. I know there's a comment that Ms. O'Tard made that there is an overlay and there is recognition for the ag sector. But I just want to ensure that that will be part of it and also looking not just for the existing primary producers. But also taking a look at economic development opportunities and potentially conversation with the Economic Diversification. Department and ensuring that we have given some thought to a road build out that will support and advance agriculture. I do have a question on the proposed commercial industrial arterial route that is running parallel to Highway sixteen eight. From Atchison to the eastern boundary of Spruce Grove and the map isn't that clear? And I recognize the alignment is conceptual. But I believe it runs through what would be considered part of the Wagner Natural Area, which would not only impact an environmentally sensitive area. But probably pose some significant challenges. And impact the county capital and operating budgets. And we've seen challenges with the road in Division six where consulting firm was confident that we could build a road over an area of high water table. That recommendation and that confidence proved, let's just say it's come at a cost. And I have similar concerns here and given the high water table in this area. And seeing and recognizing some of the challenges the city of Spruce Grove had building Pioneer Road north of sixteen A. The de-watering that's was required and is ongoing. That's being obviously pumped towards Big Lake where we've had and continue to experience some overland flood issues. I just, I'd like a comment from administration on that proposed route. That'll be my first question. For, go ahead, Amanda.
Thank you. To the mayor. Yes, so we have one fourteenth ad, which actually is being proposed to be stopped shy of the Wager Natural Area. And then the other arterial that is shown is one oh eight as which will extend to Spruce Grove. But I don't believe either of those are actually going through the limits of the Wager, Wagner Natural Area. We would also, before building this road, obviously. Select the best alignment based on geotechnical and high water table areas. And the alignment, you know, could be tweaked. We are showing this in the transportation master plan because it aligns with the actual Atchison and Big Lake Master T I A. That was produced, I believe, back in two thousand and nineteen.
And, go ahead, Mr. Hancock.
If I may add, so in the tri-regional studies and groups that I've been in, as well as the Integrated Regional Transportation Master Plan. A lot of those conversations are focused on connecting communities. And where the proper way to do that or what the proper way to do that is. So the alignment that you see in the map that's in the T M P is more around a strategy to connect the communities, to connect. The east edge of Spruce Grove and the areas of Atchison without having to use a highway. Either sixteen or sixteen eight to go out of one community onto a highway back into a community. It's a strategic connection for active modes. It's a strategic connection for transit. And of course, vehicles, there's lots of apprehension on goods movement, certainly from an industrial area to a residential area. And rather than take the opportunity out, it's about including the opportunity to put the road in. And certainly doing all the feasibility studies and analysis and financial comparisons as to cost benefit analysis as to whether it's a good idea. Prior to that actually physically occurring.
No, and I appreciate that. Again, I'm just bringing this up because of, you know, some of the concerns with, you know, the correction line. And we, you know, that came back to council. We're building a new road because that, you know, there was failure there. And I certainly understand, you know, the concept and the theory of connecting the community so they don't have to get on to the major provincial highways. But at what cost? You know, ultimately, at the end of the day, it comes down to cost. And, you know, the other question is how close would that be to Osborne Acres and what's the impact on that community as well? One of the other questions I've asked, have, and I've asked this previously, and it has to do with the collector lanes along the Yellowhead, you know, the sections. That will provide that access to strategic access to areas that are served by interchanges or overpasses. And. My understanding is when the Yellowhead is converted to freeway status, it's the provincial government's responsibility. To assume all the costs for design and construction. I see a number of these are included here again. The report also does say there's going to be several new local road connections that are proposed to support a freeway intersection removal agreement. So do we have an agreement with the province? This freeway intersection approval, removal agreement in place? And if so, are there costs to the county on that one? And I'll wait for that answer. Thanks.
I was just pausing. So I'll take this question, Amanda. So to the first or what you ended with, do we have an agreement in place? Yes, we do. An agreement was signed in two thousand and thirteen between the county and the province. For the FIRA agreement, which is freeway intersection removal agreement. It includes an agreement that extends from the city of Edmonton boundary, so the west-east limit of the county. To Highway forty-three on Highway sixteen. And includes Highway forty-three from Highway sixteen to the north limit of the county. It does not have a commitment to who pays for the roadway improvements. It does have a commitment that a transportation master plan will be completed by Parkland County. And that that transportation master plan will include road alignments that allow for the removal of accesses to Highway sixteen and Highway forty-three. This plan here provides the options that are available to consider. Some of them were recommended by the province previously. Some of them are recommended by the consultant team and our own internal groups to determine. What is the best opportunity to accommodate that?
Thank you for that, Mr. Hancock. I find it interesting because I know. Around twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we started having discussions and meeting with Alberta Transportation. And they're providing some of the conceptual design for the freeway that extended out to Range Road thirty-three. So beyond forty-three, but the agreement is only up to and including Highway forty-three westward and north. Find that interesting. What, just a couple of comments, questions on attachment number three. So T four, it says major traffic incidents, including facilities or major road injuries on county road networks. Shall require an in-service road safety audit completed by a professional engineer. But will or may not be required for all major incidents. So, you know, pardon my ignorance, when it says incidents, including facilities, what does that refer to? And the second question I have is what metrics are going to be used to determine if an audit is undertaken? Because it says not all major incidents may trigger this audit.
So I'll speak first. There's a spelling error. It's not facilities. It is fatalities is the proper word, which I'm, probably makes more sense in that structure. So again, we're looking for a standard practice through Transportation Association of Canada, which is TAC. It's the same group that we would use to build our road design standards. You know, it's a national organization that sets a certain programs in place that the communities like Parkland County can use. So they do have a process, what's called the in-service road safety audit. And there is a process to do post collision analysis. So it's a, you know, it's not a detailed review, but you know, you're going out looking to see, you know, was the stop sign knocked down? In the event that needs to be put back up. Perhaps you're looking at it saying, was the stop sign not even there and why wasn't it there? Was the signal light burnt out? If there's a signal light or a collision at a signal? Or doing a little bit of traffic safety analysis where we can and growing a little bit in that regard. Might flag and increase the prioritization of some projects where if we do have an event, how do we make sure that we don't repeat that event again? Or what can we do to put some engineering controls in if there are any fixes to that?
Great, thank you. I did have a comment on. R T three, but I'll leave that one for now. I can bring that up a different time. But I also had a question or comment on R T six, and this is the one that Councilor McNabb talked about, having the discussion with the local off-highway vehicle groups. And is this initiative? I see this is a little bit of both. And, you know, we recently had a conversation with representatives from Trans Alta regarding some of the reclamation of their mining lands. And I had asked Trans Alta team about exploring the opportunity for potentially using some of those. Old mining sites for an O H V park. So not necessarily a trail network, but a no H V park. But certainly there'd be requirement to have a road network that provides access to an area for no H V park. So that's the only comment I have on that. So very much appreciate the presentation and all the work and effort that's gone into it. And. You know, I will ask Ryan Betker from the consulting firm, you know, he was involved in this, obviously, if he has any comments that he would like to make at this point.
To the mayor, not a lot of comments from my end. I just, you know, we've been through many of these projects. Testament to your administration on how well they worked with us, how well we work together. Certainly a testament to the council. I really liked having the three touchpoints as far as getting your input. I think that helps reinforce the, you know, the direction of the T M P. And at the end of the day, I think something I'm very proud of, this is a really important plan for Parkland County. And yeah, very proud of it and I'm super excited to see it move forward.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your involvement and on behalf of council, I know council members appreciate the opportunity to provide input. And certainly the opportunity for residents and stakeholders to provide input, I think, that has influenced this plan as well moving forward. So appreciate the length that staff went in to ensure they had the feedback on that. Any further comments from members of council? And if not, I'll take a mover for the motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor Jensen. I put the motion on the floor already.
Oh, my apologies. Sorry. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, if you're in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. And that is carried. Thank you. We'll go back to item seven eight. And also I'll turn the chair back to Deputy Mayor Kabasik, and we're still dealing with item seven eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Wayne has her hand up. You're on mute.
Oh, thanks. I just was turning my volume up, but thank you.
Okay, so we're dealing with seven A one. And part of the discussion around all the notice motions that were forward is that. Staff did have a chance to review them and rather than the July sixth deadline, in order to have some time to respond properly. Staff were looking that they would all, these all be amended, changed to notice motion that would have a report back time of September seventh. So, Mayor, Chegic, when you're speaking to this, I guess when you put these motions forward, possibly they all should be amended. You could amend them as amended to September seventh, if that's agreeable.
I will amend this motion. The others, when I make, bring them forward, I'll state that they will leave for September seventh. So I'll amend this motion to reflect that the presentation be brought back for review for September seventh.
Okay, okay, so that motion is on the floor as amended. Any other discussion on that motion?
And Counselor Kabasik, I just have one comment now. If I could make. Uh, and Counselor Kabasi, I just have one comment now. If I uh could make it is that uh I believe I did state this at the beginning, but just to reiterate that uh administration did provide uh our recommendations under uh administrations uh this administrations recommendation section um under the RFD. Uh, and I I do believe that that speaks to council's questions around uh comparing current policies or current practices and and doing some work internally. Uh, so our recommendation as administration is we would take these five policy areas away. Uh, we would review them against our current policies. We would determine uh if they are filling a gap or if they're running contrary to some of our current policies or what that would look like. And then we would bring them back in September uh for council's review. So what would be brought back in September as recommended by administration, and this is for obviously council's discussion, but would be either a report or a policy.
Okay, and uh just in terms of staff time, uh, what kind of have you looked at allocation of staff time departments that would be involved? There's different areas. There's taxation. There's different areas here, infrastructure uh that we would have to be dealing with, recreation, agriculture. Um, so um in terms of top time timeline for staff, uh, there are a lot of other duties that are on the desks on the tables already.
Uh, and thank you, Counselor Kabasiak. Uh, it would take significant staff time for sure to to go through these policies and and to develop a report or develop a new policy. Um, we haven't obviously gone through them in detail to just determine what that staff time would be. Uh, but as Mr. McGowan stated, I mean, we do have a lot of competing priorities right now, which is why we are asking for that extension. Uh, uh, the intention, like I said, would not to be to bring back potentially all the policy September seventh, it would be to bring back a report on each area. Uh, uh, and if there was a policy needed or not, uh, I'm not sure if Mister Cross or Mister McGowan have anything to add there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Ms. Wayne.
Um, go ahead, Mister McGowan.
Oh, thank you, um, Counselor Kabasiak. Um, I would say that uh bringing back a report would certainly be in order. Um, to better frame the reference around uh the development of a policy. So certainly our uh will be able to do all the background information and uh present a report to council um and potentially a policy. However, I think a report would probably provide the information and background that council has been discussing around these uh policy developments uh for further discussion. And I I think that'll that'll provide the the support uh to move on to a policy.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll just move to uh two hands are raised, Counselor McNab, and then Counselor Melnick.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and Counselor Melnick was prior, but um I I guess um having those comments um a little confused in regards to to procedure here, then if we have a, uh, uh, we do have a, a, a motion on the floor to direct administration to prepare a policy, not a report. So um, I I guess um through the procedure process to send direction to administration, that would require a different um motion. And are we speaking on a motion on a particular, on each item individually or as a group to do the report perspective? And for me, they all, they all lack um information and and understanding. So um, I I guess I'm looking for clarity on 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 the motion and what the direction is to administration.
Okay, uh, there's Shagik, then uh Counselor Melnick.
And given the comments from administration, um, I believe there's enough information just you know, I'll go back to the uh one of the public hearings and the question was asked about um the lease agreement and perhaps there should be a policy that's put in place to provide clarity on that on on uh uh on leased lands, you know, a policy that there's no change in uh change to the to the lands in question under a lease, so no tree removal, no change of water course. Um, that um, anytime there is a lease agreement, that lease agreement is brought forward for second reading. Um, thi- this provides clarity to administration. Um, it provides clarity and certainty to our staff and that is the intent of all of these. It's for goes for administration to come back and to review some of the issues that are surrounding what I believe are fairly serious um uh matters for the council and um county as a whole that comes with uh costs and liabilities. Um, so I would certainly be more than willing to withdraw the first motion and put a motion forward that administration bring a report back to council um in on um and I'll use the same date, so they do have an opportunity, and that was for September seventh uh bringing information on the five motions that were presented at today's council meeting um and uh for information and potential policy development.
Okay, so just a clarification. So you'd pull all five of these and look for some a report for for information of council?
I've only, I've only put uh the one motion on the floor, so I will draw that motion. Uh, the other motions I will not put on the floor, but put a motion forward that administration bring a report back looking at potential policy um development for the five motions that we have here.
Okay, Counselor Melnick, so my apology.
Thank you very much, uh, Deputy Mayor. So for myself, um, I guess really there is, it does change a lot. It was a being around a report. However, I think it still goes back to the idea of throwing motions on the table. We don't have as council enough information to really make um strong decisions on. It it's really quite frustrating. Um, you know, uh, Counselor Kabas- uh, Counselor McNab had brought it up um in earlier discussion in and around. Um, so does this potentially contaminated soil? Does that mean movement of all soils? So we do have sod farms in town. We do have you know, the black dirt company. We do have, so anybody that's going to move any dirt anywhere, we have to consider that underneath a we don't know, like, is that contaminated soil? You don't know where they're getting it from. Everybody bringing in. You know, a lot of times right now, people are are uh building up their garden sites and so they're grabbing soil from the black dirt company. So anybody wants to build up their gardening site, is that going to mean we're going to have to get a certificate um to to bring soil in which, you know, from a farm yard? Or does that mean that um a farmyard is going to have to apply for a permit to be deemed as contaminated free? So that they can um sell black dirt. It it it's really so confusing at this point as to what is being asked of administration. And administration is going to be going back uh or could go back if this is approved. And really, they're just shooting in the dark as far as I'm concerned as to really what's being required. As was said by Counselor Jensen, each and every one of us understand that we don't want contaminated soils. For sure. But what is contamination? Is contamination going to be under the definition of contamination? Is that going to be a certain, you know, a level of of debris in there? Is that contaminated? You know, when we talk about recycling, we we've heard many times that if if somebody puts in the wrong thing in a recycle pit, in in a recycle bag, now it's contaminated soil. I just, I just don't have enough information here. It it's really frustrating, actually. Thanks.
Counselor, Counselor Jensen and then a mayor Shagis.
Sure. I, to me, again, this is just a process issue. I mean, I've been caught up in this as well, where, you know, you bring forward a notice of motion on something that gives this council an opportunity for leadership and certainly addressing a policy gap. And we're just caught in between whether we go right to policy or um some kind of process. And uh, to me, I I fully support what the mayor is bringing forward in terms of, you know, identifying policy gaps. I I certainly give him credit for that work and and he's brought these issues up in the past. And I think it just requires somehow a fulsome debate by this council or by our council in terms of whether or not in the end, like how we get to the policy decision um is the issue to me. And as I say, I've come across this as well in the past. I know other councils will put notices and motions on the floor uh with not a ton of information, but a lot of, you know, a bit of background. It's, you know, it's a governance challenge for sure. Um, yeah, just could get concerned that we're going to miss a a good opportunity to to address policy gaps, which is our, which is our role. So to me, administration, uh, I I hear the assurance of our uh interim C A O and I have full confidence in our administration that with this extended timeline, that is their job to uh dig into this and and see where gaps uh may be or or opportunities to provide that clarification back to us. That's their role. And I have full faith that they will do that. And then we can determine at that point if a policy should be formed. So I'm more comfortable with this process and uh would would support that motion. Thanks.
Uh, Mayor Shagis.
Thank you. Um, and I'll just respond to the one comment from Counselor Melnick in regards to what is contaminated soil. And again, I I don't have the expertise on that, Counselor Melnick. I don't think any council member does. As Counselor Jensen said, that is the expectation that we have of our administration. There's agricultural acts that come into to bear. Uh, do you want soil that has club root in it brought in um to agricultural lands? I don't think we do. Um, so that is the intent, was the intent of this and all the other motions is let our uh um experienced, knowledgeable staff uh bring forward information with that motion. Now I'm uh happy to have the report brought forward because there are legislative and potentially regulatory um provisions that I'm unaware of that will influence and impact the policy decisions uh or the policy development that we have in the county. Um, but like I said, I will draw the uh first motion that was on the floor. Um, that was for uh contaminated soils and uh I I have read the motion for the uh administration bring a report back uh looking at the five motions that were presented uh uh for council's consideration at the May eleventh, twenty twenty report and have administration bring their report back on September seventh. Thank you.
That will be the motion then on the items that were the five items, A one, two, three, four, and five. Okay, so those uh in place of those items, uh your your motion, and I believe Ms. Williams caught the motion, that as administration will look at these uh 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 gappy issues in terms of policy and uh review it and bring back uh some comment to council September seventh. Correct, Mayor Shagis?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, that motion is on the floor. Any other question or discussion? Please indicate in favor. Raise your hand. Any opposed? Two opposed, three carried. That motion is carried. Okay, thank you. Turn the chair back to the mayor.
Thank, thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Kabasik. So we'll move to item C legislative services and uh C one, Ms. Wayne.
And um, Mister Mayor, I'm wondering if we could request just a change in the agenda because we do have a staff member that uh needs to leave the meeting. So I'm just wondering if we could move to um seven D two?
Absolutely. We'll proceed with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, so Sarah Mate, Director of Community Services, and Suzanne Merrill, Supervisor, Recreation and Culture, are with us to present the High Crest Place Community League Amendment to License of Occupation and answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am here today uh to present to you the High Crest Community League um request for a change to their M R license. So currently, High Crest Community League holds a license on our municipal reserve. As per the conditions in the license, they do require permission from council to add any structures to the M R. High Crest is requesting permission to keep a C can that is currently on site. They would like to keep it permanently for the storage and maintenance equipment and building supplies. On the attached drawing, it is a small rectangle on the site map. Secondly, they are looking for permission to build a new covered gazebo to be used as a gathering space, which is this circle on their map. This gazebo will be built out of galvanized steel steel to ensure its longevity. Both projects will be required permits that they will apply for if permission is granted from council to proceed with this project. The community league is continuing to look for ways to enhance and improve the experience for all who use the site, and this project is in line with the current assets that they manage and maintain on the M R. Administration has been involved with this project and will continue to assist through to the completion of the project, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd be pleased to put that motion forward, Counselor Kabasik, Division Three, that council approved the addition of a gazebo and a shipping container to schedule B of the License of Occupation between Parkland County and High Crest High Crest Place Community Association as presented. And if I could just uh just speak to the motion uh in reviewing the License of Occupation, one of the things I was looking for, it was in regards to uh uh expanding the ability to extend ins- insurance for the new structures that are on the property. Uh, I know that uh this is uh High Crest Place is a little bit of a u- unusual um uh facility because they don't have an actual building, but they do have a network of volunteers and people in the community who do use the facility. So um, it's been there for a number of years. They've operated responsibly and uh working with staff. I believe that they'll be able to uh continue the need that they've identified by putting up the the gazebo and and upgrading that sea, that shipping container, so it looks aesthetically pleased in the environment. So I'll put that motion forward, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Kabasik and Counselor Melnick.
Thank you very much. Um, thanks, Ms. Merrill, for your presentation. I just wanted to um articulate out that it's great to see that even during times that are a lot challenge, a lot more challenging um than what we've experienced before, the volunteers are still gathering together and um making it it still shows the strength of community groups and and that's where really where the fabric of Parkland County is, is in and around our community groups. Um, so and then on a totally off the topic note, I just wanted to, while you're on online, personally, thank you, Ms. Merrill, for you and your team that were down at Tomahawk, again, supporting community groups once again, while you were there with the fire uh piece too. So um amazing work you guys did. Thanks.
Any additional comments um on this item from members of council? Don't see any. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. That is carried. We'll move to item D three, please, Ms. Wayne.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mayor Sarah Mate and Suzanne Merrells are also prepared to present the Hamlet of Wobman, twenty twenty-one not-for-profit organization grant funding allocation and answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Afternoon again. So I'm here today to present with you the funding requests for the nonprofit organizations that operate within the Hamlet of Wobman. The total sum of the request is fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and three cents in cash and up to a total of twelve thousand du- and fifty dollars for the use of the sports par- park and hall at no charge. The current budget includes a seven thousand dollar line item for the Dragonfly Festival and a four thousand, four hundred dollar line item for grants and non-government organizations. The remaining three thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and three cents will be funded from the Wobman General Municipal Budget. A loss in revenue of up to six hundred dollars for the Cold Diamond Sports Park and up to six hundred and fifty dollars for the Jubilee Hall would be incurred. I would also like to note that since this report was written, the COVID restrictions did change and the groups requesting the use of the sports park informed us late last week that they are unsure at this time if they will have a season and may not require the support of the up to the six hundred dollars for the sports park. The Dragonfly Festival does, is continuing to make plans for an event that will meet the current restrictions. The groups included in this request were traditionally supported by the Village of Wobman and today's request will allow them to continue accessing a similar level of financial support as in previous years. Moving forward, these groups will be expected to apply through the not-for-profit grant program that currently exists for any future funding request. The Community Development Coordinator will continue to provide assistance to the organizations in understanding Parkland County's programs and supporting them in the not-for-profit application process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a mover for this motion, please?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. It's Counselor John McNabb, Division Five, who brought forth the motion that the twenty twenty-one not-for-profit organization grant funding allocation for the Hamlet of Wobman of fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars be approved as presented. And I'd just like to make a one quick comment. I know moving forward, um, our our um Parkland team and will definitely work with um the Hamlet of Wobnum and all these nonprofit organizations to get him into the proper queue. You know, this is an interim process. And um, and and it's really, really nice that we can work with um the organizations out in Wobnum and um through this interim process. Thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Just one comment. So the there's recognition that the new health restrictions or health orders may prohibit the ballpark. From being used. And the comment was made that the individuals that are coordinating. The Dragonfly Festival are still proceeding. And this seven thousand dollars that's being allocated to this is that. What is that seven thousand dollars for? Does it take into consideration that currently, I'm not sure how successful it'd be given. The limits on outdoor gathering. There'd be a handful of people for seven thousand dollars. Does it also include additional peace officers? To ensure that there's compliance. How are we going to address potential? Backlash to attempted enforcement of the health orders that are in place because we've seen. Some of the demonstrations and the pushbacks and. You know, it's it's putting staff or peace officers potentially in a position of risk.
To you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding from what I've heard from the Dragonfly Festival in the last two weeks is they're pivoting their plans as to what they're planning on doing. Is they are shifting to activities that do not require necessarily public gatherings. We're looking at some virtual type event. Some small events that are being done, more farmer's market and outdoor. I'm more of a like a spontaneous type use versus planned large gathering type events.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? So do you have the motion on the floor from Counsel McNabb? Counselor Melnick, go ahead.
If I may. Thank you very much. You know, I understand that it's a real challenge right now and because regulations could change. In two weeks' time, which would allow them to have a much larger event than what they're thinking of having currently as the restrictions for today. So I it's kind of going out on a leap for the seven thousand dollar piece. Because we would look at a lot of our. Tomahawk and also a variety of parades, you know, if it's simply about a parade, they'll kind of say, hey, or fireworks. It's like, hey, but so this is where we go now for. For for cash to to get there. I support it in the in the understanding that we're just kind of evolving into a whole new process. But hopefully that they have an understanding that in the future as we go that. There may be different, there may be a different allocation. Thanks.
Any final comments from members of council? No, no, I will support this as well. It is fluid. Things could change and I suspect if. You know, there's any safety concerns that it may not proceed. So with that, I'll ask a question. Those in favor of the motion. That is carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move to. Item C one under Legislative Matters. Ms. Wayne, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite Josh Culling, Business Development Officer, and Avery Dawes, Municipal Projects Co-op Student. To present the repeal of Wobman bylaws and answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As a result of order in council number three eight six twenty twenty, the village of Wobman dissolved into Parkland County, becoming a hamlet of the county as of January first twenty twenty one. The one hundred and eighteen bylaws of the former village continue to apply until they are repealed, amended, or replaced by Parkland County's council. To this date, following from previous council action, fifty-four bylaws still remain in effect. Today, bylaw twenty twenty one fifteen represent the repeal of three of the former villages' bylaws related to fire services matters. This bylaw is in the, this bylaw has an accompanying schedule attached that provides a brief rationale for administration's recommendations. As well as a copy of the bylaws in question. Following from a thorough review by the project team and respective departments, administration recommends the appeal of these three bylaws through the passing of bylaw twenty twenty one. Fifteen. Administration is ready to respond to any questions related to bylaw twenty twenty one fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Can I get a mover for the first motion associated with this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tracy Melnick, Division Six Counselor. I'll put forward the bylaw twenty twenty one. Dash fifteen receive first reading.
Comments or questions at first reading? Seeing none, please raise your hand if you're in favor. That is carried unanimously. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor Jensen, Division One. I'll make the motion that bylaw twenty twenty one dash fifteen receive second reading.
Comments or questions at second reading from members of council? Seeing none, those in favor, please raise your hand. That is carried. Can I get a mover for the third motion?
Chair, Counselor Kabasik, Division Three, I'll move that bylaw twenty twenty one fifteen be presented at this meeting for third reading.
Those in favor, please raise your hand. That is carried. Can I get a mover for the fourth motion?
Mr. Mayor, it's John McNabb, Counselor, Division Five, that bylaw twenty twenty one dash fifteen receive third and final reading.
Opportunity, final opportunity to speak to this matter. Comments? So on behalf of council, I want to once again thank our administration for bringing these forward and getting the alignment and. That slow transition from a village into the hamlet, appreciate your time and effort. Those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. That is carried unanimously. And can I get a mover for the fifth and final motion, please?
Tracy Melnick, Division Counselor for, Counsel for Division Six, I'll put forward the motion that council approve authorization of electronic signature. For bylaw twenty twenty one dash fifteen in accordance with section two and three of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Those in favor, please raise your hand. That is carried unanimously. We'll move to item C two, Ms. Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh Culling and Avery Dawes are also prepared to present bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen. Hamlet of Wobman specific fees and charges and answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne. Once again, as a result of order in council number three eight six twenty twenty. The village of Wobman dissolved into Parkland County, becoming a hamlet of the county as of January first twenty twenty one. Bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen continues the effort to fully integrate the Hamlet of Wobman within Parkland County by repealing the Wobman Master Rates. And Fees bylaw and three associated amendments. Bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen also temporarily establishes specific fees related to amenities and services within the Hamlet of Wobman. These temporary fees do not represent new fees for the Wobman residents, but rather the continuation of specific fees. From the former villages' master rates and fees bylaw. As a result of bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen, Wobman residents will be subject to the same fees and rates as all other Parkland County residents. With the exception being utilities and solid waste, which will be addressed at a later date. Following from a thorough review of by the project team and respective departments, administration recommends the repeal of these four bylaws. And the establishment of the stated temporary fees for the remainder of the twenty twenty one calendar year through the passing of bylaw twenty twenty one sixteen. Administration is ready to respond to any questions related to bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Can I get a mover for the first motion, please?
I'll make the motion that bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen receive first reading, Counselor Jensen, Division One.
Comments or questions at first reading, Counselor Melnick?
Thank you. I do have a question needed around the one for information is to. So is the running of the Jubilee Hall now out of the county community, uh, Community Services Department? Typically, we have organizations that run it. I'm assuming it's being run and booked through currently our offices. And the second one, and underneath bus users fees, and I know the comment was made, there is no additionally increased. Wobman users, but would any resident of Parkland County be able to rent the bus? Thank you.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, two and three to Counselor Melnick. And if I miss anything, I'm sure Ms. Mate will jump in and 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 support me. Terms of the community hall right now, it is something that we take on responsibility for the management and booking of that facility. Ultimately, long term, our hope is that there's some folks in the community that are groups there existing already that might be willing to. Act as sort of a community association similar to what we have in other parts of the county and perhaps take on that that responsibility. But for right now, it is us. In terms of, in terms of the bus, that is something that is very new to us. My understanding is. Of course, it hasn't been used very much because of COVID. Previously to that, it was used a lot by the Wobman F C S S folks. And a little bit by the school. Ms. Mate, I don't know if you have any other information. I'm not sure. We haven't really reviewed if we're going to expand that or or what the future looks like around that type of transit. I know we we have to review our whole specialized transit. Approach and this could be part of that review, but Ms. Mate, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Cross. We do have a program happening right now where we are helping seniors get to their vaccination appointments. And we are using that bus for that. So right now it's kind of one-off program specific use. While we figure out the long-term use of the bus and that system for Wobman and the rest of Parkland County.
If I may, because the question comes up that I believe, and I I think I'm a hundred percent correct on it. But that the wild was us with their legion, which served a lot of the seniors in our area. That they were probably not running anymore. So there could be a request for other senior organizations, you know, to be able to take some seniors out as well. Just throwing it out, hasn't hasn't been approached to me, but just throwing that out as a potential option. Thanks.
Any additional comments at first reading? Seeing none, please raise your hand if you're in favor. That is carried. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Chairman, Counselor Kabasik, Division Three, I move that bylaw twenty twenty one sixteen receive second reading.
Looking to members of council to see if there's comments or questions at second reading. I'm not seeing any. Those in favor, please raise your hand. That is carried unanimously. Can I get a mover for the third motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor John McNabb, Division Five, that bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen be presented at this meeting for third reading.
Those in favor? That is carried. Can I get a mover for the fourth motion, please?
Thank you very much. Tracy Melnick, Division Counselor for Division Six, and I'll put forward that bylaw twenty twenty one. Dash sixteen receive third and final reading.
And final opportunity for members of council to comment on this. Motion. Seeing none, those in favor, please raise your hand. That is carried and mover for the fifth and final motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Jensen, Division One, I'll make the motion that council approve authorization of electronic signature for bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen. In accordance with section two thirteen of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Those in favor, please raise your hand. That is carried. And we'll move now to committee reports under eight three, and I'll start with Counselor Jensen.
Well, I had it up here. Um, just the only thing to report is last week I attended a joint. Technical Advisory Committee meeting between the Headwaters Alliance and the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance. Where we were talking about what development of wetland strategy for the sub-basins of both. And I'll bring forward the results of that, but always an interesting conversation because administration is at that particular table. So we reviewed a wetland strategy needs survey, potential options for the data that's been collected around wetlands in this area. And then potential options for that strategy development specific to wetlands in the North Saskatchewan River watershed. And then next step. So really, it was just a bit of a visioning exercise around the goals and vision and to embed into. How to action these discussions that we have at the elected official tables forward. So as soon as that's compiled, I'll make sure that. It's, well, it'll be through Krista Cornell as well, but the council views it too. Thanks. That's all for me.
Thank you, Counselor Jensen. Counselor Kabasik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just recently, we've had a chance to chat with the R C M P about police funding. That was very positive, meaning we haven't had that opportunity one-on-one with K divisions. So that was good. We also had an opportunity to discuss with our N L A Smith and Getson issues within our, within the constituency area. So appreciated that. Wanted just briefly report on the Community Planning Association. They had their conference, May third to fifth. And it's online. There still is recording if anyone's interested, but the theme there was rural destinations differently. They talked about economic development and tourism and how you're going to be doing different things. Especially with people with COVID and people want people wanting to get into rural communities. So that focus was good. A Dr. Clark talked about social cohesion and community development. He did indicate that. Post-COVID coming out of COVID, it's going to be important for people getting off of social and into community engagement where people can feel that they're fully heard in public. So I know I'm hearing some of that from my community, so that's going to be a next step. Valley View presented their architect and their C O, a Valley View Passive House Town Hall that they constructed. And they went over the municipal objectives with regard with regard to minimize lifecycle cost, construction. Development emphasize emphasis passive features, adaptability and flexibility, net zero energy and resilient to changes. Looking at a building over seventy-five year period and covering areas of, you know, different ways of looking at insulation, air tightness, thermal bridge. Windows and doors and mechanical ventilation. So that would be a really an interesting building to take a look. I don't know for our staff. We have people that are looking at innovative ways. That might be something that could be on a list. Little update was provided by Brownlee and talked about the Citizenship Initiative Act. How people could collect pensions, Bill fifty-two, the Recall Act. That was something that hit the media over. Their roles. Bill forty-eight, the red tape production has been around for a while. It's going to be coming into effect June second. And it talks about the four boards that rolled into one land and property rights tribunal that will be coming into place and. You know, if the province has an interest in the matter, they can be a gate keeper with in terms of function. So. You know, issues that we have in Parkland County that might be relevant to what's going to be happening there. And one of the closing speakers was a gentleman out of Ontario, Ag Education. And they were talking about strong rural Canada's where you need strong rural schools with that's the heart and the beat of the local community. And that was the thing we sort of talked about when we chatted with Parkland School Division. And just finally, that both the A U M A Urban Municipalities President Barry Morschita and. Rural Municipalities President Obama Block and also participated and talked about what's new in terms of planning with municipalities across Alberta. I'll leave those, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McNabb.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll bring forward some comments that we're having, some conversation we're having with the Sony Plant Seed. Association and triggered by our egg services for a bit of a ask out. On all the communities that can provide a bit of help with the fire relief in Tomahawk area. And so the seed plant has looked at what what they could offer in respect to maybe some feed oats or whatever. Might be able to offer at a reduced foster or cost for those affected individuals. And so I I guess. And our egg service board was canceled due to the. Impact on last Friday. So but you know, thanks for them for reaching out to the Sea Cleaning Association and the Sea Cleaning Association for actually considering. What we can do as a community group and or as an organization of the to help with this type of a relief. Yet hasn't been finalized, but yet to come. Thank you.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you very much. So a few of us attended a meeting with the. Thank you very much. So a few of us attended a meeting with the PSD Seventy, so the school division. One of the things, of course, is to discuss our commonalities where things are of joint concern for us or opportunities for us. I will just make note, though, that the Cedar Beach School has sold now. I know during our discussion it was up to sale, but it has sold. We do see a sold sign put on there, so I guess that will be interesting to find out what will be in Parkland County. That is Parkland County land, so we may see some opportunity there for us. Councilor McNabb and myself attended the library board meeting. Items of theirs for continuing to do policy development. In that area, we are working on finalizing our next work plan for the next four years as required by the province. And just wanted to highlight feeling a little bit of their thunder, but because they will present that once they present to council. But they have donated books to both Paul First Nations New School. So some of our gently-used books to users there kind of taken, just take books from there. So it's not a lending situation. It's just giving them that opportunity. And also too, that we received word that books that were donated out of our weeding collection to the orphanage in Kenya was received and a really nice card back thanking for those books. I also am participating in the twenty twenty-one agri-food innovation summary that is put on by the government. It is going to be a four-part series. It just started yesterday. So once those are all completed, I will update if there's any information that I think is relevant and maybe of assistance to us here at Parkland County. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple items. On Monday, May the third, there was a regional agriculture master plan task force meeting. Of course, is through the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board. So that was the first task force meeting in a couple of months because the four rural municipalities were meeting to discuss some of the policy, potential policy development and implementation, given that these policies will impact the four worlds more than any of the urban municipalities. And so we will be starting the next round of public engagement that will be going through the month of May. Obviously, challenging time because our egg producers throughout the region are out in the fields, many of them. But hopefully, we'll be able to, through the virtual surveys and opportunities for comment, find support on the policy development that is moving forward. And then also last week, Wednesday, Council McNabb and I did have an opportunity to go to the Scheidemann's property. We met with Lynn Scheidemann and her husband Harvey and Harvey's mother, Bee, Mrs. Scheidemann, as I call her, to celebrate a hundred-year farm family and, you know, great recognition. You know, Mrs. Scheidemann lost her husband earlier last year, and they've been strong volunteers and pillars in the community. And it's great to see Harvey continue on and operating the family farm there. So it was a great opportunity to acknowledge them and present them with a plaque on behalf of Parkland County Council. So with that, if I can get a mover to accept the committee reports as information, please.
Mr. Chair, Council Kabashik, Division Three, I'll move the committee reports be received as information.
Thank you. And those in favor, please raise your hand. That is carried. And so that brings us to the conclusion of today's agenda and we'll adjourn at twelve forty-four. Thank you for staff, for your work on today's agenda, and for the members of the public who took part in the public hearing.